One. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 29th, 2020 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz, the Chair of the Committee. This meeting is being held online as a Zoom meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law. This meeting is being audio and video recorded by Northampton Open Media, and it is being broadcast live on Northampton Open Media, as well as, I believe, can be streamed from Northampton Open Media's website. So if you are here to participate in the meeting, we'll be having a public comment session. If you want to simply watch the meeting, you can also go over to those other media channels to just watch the meeting. So we will begin the meeting asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee, please.
Member Goldman.
Are you going?
Member Goldman? Uh, member Voss?
Present.
Member Gold?
Who needed all?
So folks, if I could just ask everyone who's not on the school committee, please mute yourselves.
I gotta get some healthier food, too.
Okay, I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
All and see if that helps. So we'll continue with the roll call of the school committee, please. You're muted, Annie, so you have to unmute. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm also gonna ask the school committee, please unmute yourselves while I do this. And I'm gonna ask again because I didn't hear kayak. Member Goldman? I'm not sure she's here. Member Gold? Mayor Narcoitz?
Present.
Member Busansky?
Present.
Member Fallon?
Present.
Member Seraphi Cox?
Present.
Member Condon?
Present.
Member Levy? Member Levy? And member Kaufman?
Present.
F7 present. Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. We can continue to monitor in case our colleagues are having a time, tough time joining the meeting for some reason. So the first item on our agenda tonight is public comment period. So for those who have given public comment before, we typically ask folks to use the raise hand function on Zoom, which you can access through the participants menu, and you'll have a hand raise button that you can access. If you're happen to be calling in, you can actually, you can actually do that by pressing star six, I believe, is hand raise, and that also allows you to raise your hand. I will be recognizing people in the order in which they raise their hands, and I will be timing folks. Don't have a timer built into Zoom, but I'll be timing folks on my iPhone here and letting you know when you're getting close and asking you to please finish up so that everyone has an equal opportunity to provide three minutes of public comment. So when I, when I call your name, if you could just unmute yourself, you can turn your video on or off, please state your name and where you live for the record. And so the first person who has their hand raised is Noah Cassis.
Hi, my name is Noah Cassis. I am seventeen years old. I attend Northampton High School. I live in Ward One in Northampton. I'll be brief. Basically, I am speaking in favor of eliminating the position of school resource officer and transitioning to a system of, not exactly sure what that would look like, but I would imagine utilizing school therapists or counselors more heavily and looking at ways to deal with discipline in school that does not involve police and doesn't feed into the school-to-prison pipeline. With that, I yield my time.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, Noah. The next person who raised their hand is first name Amy. Amy, if you could unmute yourself and state your full name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Amy Martin, a parent of a high school student. I live in Ward Two. And the last time I spoke before you was right before the schools closed in mid-March and learning became remote as best it could. And I just want to acknowledge the extraordinarily challenging time we're in, and thank you all for working to find our way through the pandemic with as much care and attention to the disparate impacts on vulnerable parts of our community as possible as you discuss plans for school in the fall. But returning to March, when I was here last with a few others that night, I was here to talk about the death of high school student Navea Malina at the end of January and the hurtful response by the high school and the district to her death, and the need for the district to more, much more comprehensively adopt teaching about social emotional wellness and to more deeply address racism, sexism, bias, and bullying in our school community. Sadly, the spread of the pandemic overrode the possibility of the school community grieving Navea's death together. And here we are now with the equally devastating but much longer-term pandemic of racism rocking our country and city once again. The steps the city is taking to imagine public safety have led to the school resource officer being eliminated, at least for now, as we all know, from our schools. And frankly, as a parent and community member, I'm relieved. I don't believe armed officers in the schools are appropriate. And I believe that the interwoven issues of racism, the disparate rates of discipline on students of color in Northampton schools, and what role a school resource officer could ever have in addressing these complex issues are more relevant than ever. A hope that as you develop alternatives to the SRO, SRO role for the next school year, you will use this opportunity to begin to develop truly just ways to prevent and address conflict and harm within our schools. I don't know the status of the code of conduct that has been in revision, but it could represent a profound opportunity to re-envision justice in our schools. There are, as Noah mentioned, many models of restorative justice which have adopted in Northampton would have a profound effect on school culture. And let our Northampton schools teach the values of equity and compassion that I know we all share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person who has raised their hand is Jenny Bender. Jenny, if you could unmute and you'll have three minutes, please state your name and where you live.
Okay. My name is Jenny Bender. I live in Northampton. I have two kids in the Northampton Public Schools, and I'm a member of REAL, Racial Equity and Learning, a group of caregivers, students, teachers, and staff in the public schools working toward becoming an anti-racist district. Today, I'm sharing a statement that was written collectively by members of REAL. First, we want to acknowledge that the challenges of reopening are at the forefront of everyone's minds tonight. However, because school discipline is on the agenda and because of the current and rightful outrage about the need for racial justice, we feel compelled to speak on the issues of police presence and alternative forms of discipline in the Northampton schools. We are pleased to hear that as part of the budget cuts, the Northampton Police Department eliminated the district's school resource officer position, as we know there are much more effective and less harmful ways to deal with conflict in schools. It's also important to acknowledge that this is not about one individual, but about what the data tells us about police in schools. Research across the country on the impact of SROs reveals shocking data. We will include more when we email this statement, but one example, a three-year study of thirteen schools in a southeastern school district with both urban and suburban characteristics showed schools with SROs had nearly five times the number of arrests for disorderly conduct as schools without an SRO, even when controlling for the level of economic disadvantage of the school. And not surprisingly, the presence of SROs disproportionately harms targeted populations, namely students of color and students with disabilities. For example, seventy percent of students arrested at school are black or Latinx. It is critical to note that data also shows that schools are no safer today than they were before the implementation of SRO programs. We know that Northampton is not exempt from these statistics, no matter the rhetoric about our so-called progressive town. To illustrate, white students at the high school are the only racial group whose percentage of disciplinary action, fifty percent, is lower than their percentage of the population, sixty-nine point three percent. Compare that to our black students who make up two point eight percent of the population and account for five point eight three percent of disciplinary actions, and our Latinx students who make up seventeen point seventeen percent of the population and account for thirty point eighty-three percent of disciplinary actions. The termination of the SRO position provides an opening for us to seek new and better possibilities for dealing with conflict in schools. There are two related projects that REAL will be working on in coordination with other local groups and community members. One, a commitment to sever all relationships between Northampton Public Schools and the Northampton Police Department from here on out in the form of a school committee resolution. And two, a push for a truly authentic restorative justice approach in our schools. Here, we would like to note that the newly revised Code of Conduct claims this is something the district is committed to. We hope that going forward, the district goes beyond making claims about anti-racist intent to actually following up with anti-racist actions and practices that, though they will require time and effort and a willingness to make and learn from mistakes, will ensure our schools are healthier places for all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny. The next person with their hand raised is Karen Hidalgo. Karen, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Karen Hidalgo. I am a resident of Ward One. I live at one thirty-three Barrett Street in Northampton. I have two children in the Northampton Public Schools, a daughter at JFK and a son at Jackson Street. I work as a high school counselor, also known as a guidance counselor at Northampton High School. I've worked here for a little over five years, and I'm here to talk about the staffing levels at the high school. In all my time at Northampton High School, there's always been a shortage of staff in math, art, and Spanish each year. Social studies is also beginning to look a little bit short as well. Last year, we had to tell about a dozen new registering students that they couldn't take Spanish because all the Spanish II classes were full at thirty. This year, the year that's coming up, we're avoiding that by cutting a full section of Spanish culture and film so that students who requested that course may not be able to take it. But the students who are coming in who need Spanish II should be able to get in. Many of the classes in math at the high school are over twenty-five. They're often twenty-eight to thirty. Sometimes they're over thirty. When school counselors are working with new students, we have trouble finding room in certain classes and departments. Math, Spanish, and art classes are often full. We need a full-time math teacher at the high school. We need at least a part-time art teacher. We have an art teacher right now. We have one point eight seven art teachers, and we could definitely use two full-time art teachers. And we have, we're hiring a part-time Spanish teacher because we have somebody leaving the district, and we really could use a full-time Spanish teacher instead. We also have a need for a 504 coordinator. The 504s and related paperwork have proliferated over the past years and are taking time away from counselors working with students on social emotional issues, academic counseling, college and career counseling. And that was a topic that I came to talk about, but as people are speaking, I just wanted to say, to add that I'm really glad to hear the interest in restorative justice and the anti-racist work happening in the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. The next person who has their hand raised is Jonathan Knapp. Jonathan, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and where you live for the record.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Knapp. I live at three twelve Main Street in East Hampton. I teach English at Northampton High School, and I use he/him pronouns. I just want to say thank you to the school committee members who got the discussion of the school resource officer on the agenda for tonight. And I'm very happy to hear that. I was very happy to see that budgetary decisions will not have an armed, mean that we won't have an armed officer at the high school this year. And I hope that y'all will make that a Northampton Public Schools policy. And I want to thank those of you who have written to me in support of getting rid of the school resource officer. Those, those have been very encouraging conversations, so I thank you for that. And I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who has signed up is Sharon Deal. Sharon, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sharon Deal. I live at fifty-seven Baker Hill Road in Florence. I recently completed my twenty-fifth year as a special education teacher and eight years at JFK. I look forward to seeing the plan you finalize and approve in order to keep our students, families, faculty, and staff safe and limit the spread of COVID. This plan will impact stakeholders' financial stability. More importantly, though, I am sure you are thinking about the impact this plan will have on the health and safety of our community. For me, the long and short-term health and safety consequences of COVID far outweigh any other consequences, particularly if the negative health and safety consequences lead to morbidity or mortality. These outcomes will not just be data points in a study. They will be the children of your community, families, friends, neighbors, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. The next person who has their hand raised is Phil Alape.
Hi, can you hear me? David?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm new in town from San Francisco. My daughter's enrolled at Northampton High, and I am in favor of live sessions within the guidance of whatever the state's recommending. I think, you know, the numbers that are coming out from Massachusetts show that it's been well-contained here. And I think the kids should get together in school and, you know, the hybrid method where, whatever it is, every other day or every other week, and so you can space the kids out physically. I think that should be sufficient. So that's my, my vote. And then I'm glad that this discussion had some element of the police situation in Northampton woven into it because we, we've been flabbergasted at the, what, you know, the common phrase is police presence. So here it is, a sleepy little peaceful town, and you can't drive out of your driveway and drive for thirty seconds without seeing a cop around here. And we saw in the paper the other day, there's something like seventy-five cops on the payroll in Northampton. You got captains and sergeants and lieutenants. It seems ridiculous. And, you know, particularly when, in the context of comments from the people who are working in the school system, begging for a Spanish teacher, begging for the, you know, resources. And I mean, I saw a van today, Northampton Crime Scene Investigation Unit. So, you know, these, these rural states have state police, and the state police can cover these towns. You don't need seventy-five cops in a town like Northampton, and you don't need them out patrolling Route sixty-six and watching stop signs and guarding, you know, stoplights and so forth. There's, there are too many police here. That's my feeling. Save the money. Get rid of half the police force here. That's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alape. The next person who's signed up to speak is July Seibacker. July, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. My name is July Seibacker. I live at forty-one Indian Hill in Florence. I'm in Ward Six. And I wanted to ask some questions and make a couple of statements specifically about school return in the fall. I have a rising sixth grader. I have a child who goes to the Montessori school in Northampton. So I've had a chance to see how, a couple of different ways it, it looks this past year. I would like to hear if you're in this meeting, a report about what has already been put in place. I'm assuming I will, but I want to urge the possibility of returning to school early, which probably isn't most people's first choice because it's hot. But, you know, nobody's getting everything they want in this COVID-nineteen circumstance. You know, if the difference is kids complain about being hot, and it's less hot if you're outdoors, which I'll talk about in a second, and you're under a tent. Or a greater risk of actual illness, I would take that everybody's cranky because it's hot. But the data continues to show that it's much safer when done right to be outside, and so I would like.
We're having a hard time hearing you, July. Your sound is coming out.
I want to urge them to be used for, okay, what was the last thing everybody heard clearly? Sorry, I'm, I'm in my phone on my, in my car.
The end of your last, the end of your last sentence, you kind of came in and out a little bit, so you can just pick up from there.
I would like to urge the use of tents as classrooms for the purpose of actually conducting classes outdoors for as long as possible. Yes, it'll be hot. Yes, it'll be cold, but what it won't be is as dangerous as if kids are stuck inside a room all day, whether or not they're six feet apart. And I would like to hear a report about the, about the acquisition of tents related to that. I also got my kid's progress report, and it was kind of startling to see all the subjects that haven't been able to even be touched that were supposed to be addressed in fifth grade curriculum. And I think we should assume the eventuality is that we will be going to remote learning. I would like to urge that we have a lot more preparation this time, but I'm very concerned about the fact that we have lost a third of this past year in terms of curriculum, and we're likely to lose more of next year. And so no matter how good remote learning winds up being, and I would strongly urge that it stops being a choice and that we catch up people who cannot connect correctly individually rather than let everybody fall behind. But I'd like to hear preparation for how we're going to make up as much as possible, given that we are gonna need to be safe before we're gonna need to be there. And.
You're, you're at time now, July, so. Okay, thank you. And, and I, I didn't, I didn't announce this at the beginning, but our, our public comment is not interactive. We, we don't, we're not, we don't respond to questions. There obviously will be a discussion of the school reopening progress, and so perhaps some of those questions will be answered then, but we don't. This isn't a time that we can directly answer questions. The next person who has their hand up is Daniel Kennedy. Daniel, if you can unmute and state your name and address, and I'll start the timer.
My name is Dan Kennedy. I'm in Ward Four, one sixty-seven South Street. I don't usually attend school committee meetings. I want to say that. But one of the things that I think is really important and that people have already started the conversation around is that we have a chance to speak about what our values are as a community. When we talk about the allocation of resources, the Northampton Police Department budget was cut, and there's a chance for the schools to ask for that money and to really invest in schools, right? We've already heard that things are underfunded. There are schools that are out of ADA compliance, and there are children who are in wheelchairs that cannot access a bathroom without assistance. These are major points where we have a chance to invest in those communities. So I really look forward to seeing people ask the important questions of what can we do with more resources? What will actually help? And what will make the Northampton Public School system look like the values that we all hold? Now, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Daniel. The next person whose hand is raised is Andrea Agito. Andrea?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd like to start by thanking everyone that's been working so hard to prepare for reopening and recovery. I'd like to thank, say thank you to this committee for doing the hard work of hearing the concerns of staff and community members as you prepare to make a thoughtful decision. I would also like to thank everyone that is committed to continuing the discussions and actions around restorative justice and anti-racism in our schools. As we look to reopen, some form of hybrid version would combine the interests of many parties and will provide some face-to-face interaction for all students. Relationships with teachers and seniors. In order to be as safe as possible during face-to-face interactions, we must make it a priority to expand outdoor spaces and follow CDC guidelines. PPE must be mandated for all, as well as maintaining six feet social distancing, regardless of the new guidance from the state. The state is giving guidance to reopen the economy. We must remain strong to protect the health and well-being of our students and staff. We understand that for some of our younger students and students with special needs, wearing a mask may not be tolerable, and there may be difficulty staying six feet apart. We can deal with that on a case-by-case basis once we have shared, a shared understanding for all. Our scenarios should not change at all in a reaction to the recent state guidance. We also need to be flexible for students, families, and teachers who need to be completely remote, whether it's because they need to quarantine or because they or their family members are high-risk. Pairing teachers who want to be remote with students who need to be remote is very important. Adding PD and prep time to allow for extra collaboration and planning for take-home work or mirroring work remotely is critical. One of the biggest downfalls to the attempts at co-teaching was the lack of enough common planning time. We can't let that be the case now. We must provide teachers with enough time to work together and plan exceptional programs for both learning in person and remotely. While we are planning our reopening, we also need to focus on getting additional funding to make sure our district isn't sapped of critical programs that, once they are gone, very rarely come back. Not filling vacant positions and outsourcing our classes should never be an option. If we need additional math classes to help our students, then we should be hiring additional math teachers, not paying to put patches on our programming needs. During reopening, our students need to be connecting to the classes in their schedule more than ever. They need electives and exploratory blocks in addition to the requirements that will keep them engaged and excited about their learning. Now, more than ever, we need to be expanding our course offerings in all departments, not cutting them. During these difficult times and to help our students recover, we need more staff, not less. I pledge to work every day to advocate for additional funding for our schools, and I hope you will join me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea. The next person whose hand is raised is Carl Mead. Carl?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Carl Mead. I live at fifty-eight Northeast Street in Amherst. I use he/him pronouns, and I am a teacher in the English department of Northampton High School. Back in April, you voted to approve a budget that maintained an eight-teacher English department at NHS. You argued that seven teachers serving the entire school was too few, and we, as a department, appreciated that you understand what we need in order to best serve our students. Around the end of this past year, our department chair, Sue Crago, let us know that she was resigning to take a job in another district. Of course, we were sad to lose a beloved colleague and a fixture of the school community, but we all eagerly awaited the job's posting so we could volunteer for the search committee to replace her. But the posting did not go up. Instead, we started hearing rumors about proposals to eliminate that eighth position again. And eventually, eleven days into the summer, in a letter to the entire NHS faculty, we were informed. we were informed that our department would be reduced to seven. Last week, the English department wrote you another letter asking that you show your support for our department once again. Since then, we have fielded several questions about that letter. And there is one thing I would like to make clear. Everything we wrote in that letter was based on information provided by school officials. We hope that after this meeting and after everything is said and done, that we will be able to work together to find an English teacher who can fill some of the enormous void left in our department. Lastly, I would like to emphasize what Superintendent Provost told the NHS faculty a few weeks ago. He said that we will need more teachers in schools through this pandemic, not fewer. I hope you'll take that guidance to heart and act accordingly. Thank you for listening. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Willa Sippel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Willa.
Awesome. Thank you. My name's Willa Sippel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Florence, Massachusetts, and I just graduated from North Hampton High School, which is very exciting. And I'm, I'm speaking here today for two reasons. One is to express my full support of removing school resource officers from schools. I believe they have no place being in any school district whatsoever and they fuel the school-to-prison pipeline. And personally, I have never felt safer because we've had an armed police officer in our school and I've heard that reiterated by many of my peers. So I, I'm glad that this opportunity came up for them to no longer be in the schools, but I also want to pass a resolution to make sure that that is a permanent decision by the North Hampton School District. The second thing I'm talking about, I want to echo what Mr. Mead mentioned. I recently heard a rumor that, that the school is thinking or was going to eliminate the position of a English teacher. Frankly, I'm, I'm really disappointed by that because I, it was kind of a triumph when we found out that that had been shut down earlier this year. And I've been in English classes that have been way over capacity and teachers are more focused on controlling the classes than they actually are on teaching because that's how you have to manage it and that's not on teachers at all. It's when you have, oops, it's when you have way too many students in a classroom packed in like sardines. So I want to, again, we need more students, more teachers, not less right now. And I really, really oppose cutting a position of an English teacher because Craig O. is leaving. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you, Willa. The next person whose hand is raised have the first name Liz. Liz, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Liz Ball and I live in Florence in Ward one. I am a parent of a rising first grader at Leeds and I will be teaching second grade at Leeds in the fall. And I just wanted to speak to the idea because, and that not to single out the commenter who said it earlier because it's not the first time I've heard it. The idea that it working in 100-degree heat is a mere inconvenience or being slightly discomforted. I've had situations at Leeds where I've had to send kids to the nurse because they became sick from how hot it was in my classroom. And that's with school starting in September. And that sounds dramatic, but I'm not like, I'm not sending kids to the nurse for fun. I felt very ill from, and had to be extremely strategic in my classroom about how unbearably hot it gets. We don't ask anyone except kids and teachers to work indoors under these conditions. And I just like, if kids get sick from heat stroke and you have to send them to the nurse, like that is compounding their potential exposure to illness to an extent that probably mitigates any benefit of starting earlier. If there is no plans to include air conditioning or any type of temperature control in the buildings, I would urge the school committee to be very, very careful about deciding to start the school year earlier. Heat is not just an inconvenience. Heat can be dangerous. And there was a giant Harvard study in 2018 that showed that when temperatures are above 90 degrees in a working space, it negatively impacts student learning for as much as almost 1% for each degree. And of course, that negative impact is more pronounced in kids who come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. This isn't just an inconvenience thing. This really, if you look at that study, the extent of it is really profound and we need to be thinking about all of the kids and not just the people who talk at school committee. And so I would really just urge that when we're talking about the conditions that we're working and learning in, in the schools, that we're not only thinking of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. The next person with their hand raised is Michelle Sullivan. Michelle, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you, David. So I will keep myself pretty brief. I am an educator who lives in Ward 7B. I'm an early educator who's been working in the North Hampton area since the 90s. And my husband is a high school teacher in South Deerfield. I also have a daughter who will be a ninth grader in the fall. I just wanted to touch base on a few of the issues around reopening that a lot of other people have brought up, mostly Andrea Agito. Thank you. Basically, I feel really strongly that we need to prioritize best practice. We know that, we know some things about how this is spread and the guidelines that came out bumping social distancing down to three feet in classrooms. I feel that decision was made in the best interest of the economy, that it's not science-based. It's not based on what we know about how air droplets spread, even with mask use. I strongly, strongly urge that any in-person learning that goes on needs to happen in spaces where children and adults are spaced six feet apart from each other. We know it's not ideal for personal connection, but that's not what we're focusing on right now. I also would like to voice my support for teaching in outdoor environments whenever it's possible. I understand that it's not always possible. There are a lot of budgetary and logistical concerns in the way, but in terms of what we know about how this virus spreads, in terms of airflow and air quality, it's best practice. I feel that in terms of children's mental health and learning, that a hybrid model splits the difference between those two. But I feel like we're dealing with a temporary problem that's here for, for now, that the consequences are very, very serious. COVID is not going to be here for forever, but when it is here, we need to prioritize keeping children and families safe from it. To that end, maintaining flexibility to allow teachers and students that need to work from home for their safety, the safety of their family needs to be part of our plan. We already have a fairly punitive attendance policy in the public school system, particularly for families that are medically complicated or dealing with disability. And I feel that we need to really readjust the way that we look at that in, in the eyes of COVID. One of the things that came up with, in conversation with my husband today in terms of best practice in a COVID classroom and best practice in general when you're teaching, is how interesting it is that better adult teacher ratios are something that we know have very positive outcomes for students in general. If you have smaller class sizes and then it's better.
Good evening. This is the resumption of the June 29th, 2020 school committee meeting, North Hampton School Committee meeting. We had a little power glitch there. The power went out. Several of us got kicked off the call. So I believe when we last left, we had another hand raised and that was Cherylyn Strater. Cherylyn, if you want to unmute yourself and state your name and offer public comment.
Thank you. It's been an interesting break, but glad I can speak. My name is Cherylyn Strater. I use she/her pronouns and I live in Ward six. I'd like to echo some of the sentiments of Andrea Agito, Carl Mead, Willa Sippel and Michelle Sullivan. In that I'm looking forward to seeing a resolution to permanently remove officers from our school. As a recent NHS grad from 2019, I personally didn't understand the need for an armed officer in our schools. And in these discussions tonight, I hope that we can think about what discipline means and why we automatically think about punishing students versus thinking about restorative justice. And I'd also like to say that I am disturbed by the idea of cutting a teacher from the English department. Again, as a recent grad, I personally know that teachers don't, in classrooms, don't have enough capacity. I have been in classrooms where we frankly didn't have enough chairs for every student. And in one class, we took turns who sat on the floor because there just was one chair that there just wasn't enough. And like you, there were too many heads in the room to see the board and there's not enough airtime for everyone to be able to ask their questions. And if you have an IEP or a 504, like you just don't get enough attention. So I, it's just disturbing to think that the English department will have to have even larger class sizes and it's just wrong for future students to have to endure that. So I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, so there are no other hands raised. Is there anyone who's having technical difficulties raising their hand? Because you're on a phone or you're having issues doing it through your, your Zoom program? If so, if you could unmute and just let me know that you wish to speak. Again, asking folks to either use the hand raise function or on a phone, I believe star six will allow you to raise your hand. Okay. So I'm not seeing anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment. So I will close the public comment period and we'll move on in the, move on in the agenda. Now tonight's agenda, we have several announcements and we, well, we have announcements and then we have several reports and recommendations followed by, had been planned to be followed by an executive session. We're actually going to move into the executive session first to be able to take care of that. We hope very expeditiously and then be able to come back out into the main meeting to, to proceed with the meeting. So I'm going to ask, and school committee members will actually leave this Zoom meeting and go to a separate Zoom meeting for the executive session. So this Zoom meeting will stay and will continue to be here and we will return to it. So.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a little glitch. If I leave this meeting as the host of the meeting, it will shut down the meeting.
Okay.
I guess, but Dr. Provost and I didn't quite think that.
It's okay. I have the, I have the other meeting open. It's actually open now. People can just go to that meeting and I will give you the notes from the meeting.
Okay. All right. I'll stay here. Thank you.
Okay. So, but don't go yet because we actually have to take a vote. So I would ask if, if there would be a motion to request the entry of executive session. Someone would make that motion.
Sure. So do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will, I'd like to make a motion to request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
Do you second that motion, Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is made by Member Voss and seconded by Member Kaufman. I'll now ask the clerk to call the roll. Yes would be to move into the executive session.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narquett?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condam?
Yes.
Member Levy? And then here, Member Levy. I know, maybe I shouldn't come back in. Member Kaufman?
Yes.
And Member Goldman?
Yes.
The vote is nine because I don't believe Member Levy is back in.
Okay, so the motion carries and the executive, the executive session is approved. So the school committee will now exit this Zoom meeting and enter executive session. We will return to open session from the executive session. So we will, members can now leave this meeting and go into the executive session meeting.
Three, two, one. Good evening. We are reconvening the June 29th, 2020 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. We are reconvening an open session after having completed a duly voted on executive session. So we will now pick up our agenda. And we will go to announcements. And so are there any announcements from members of the school committee? If so, if you could raise your hand, any announcements from members of the school committee? Member Kaufman.
Thank you. Dr. Provost, I'm sorry. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is, I thought it would be a good idea. Can you give a very quick summary of or make a quick announcement regarding the JFK principal search and what if any community members want to convey any questions to the candidate, what they need to do?
Sure. Thank you very much. The screening committee has identified one candidate. He will be meeting with a number of different constituent groups over the course of the day on Wednesday. There's a meeting at 1:30 with administrators. There's a meeting later in the day with faculty. And then there's a meeting in the evening for parents and community members. So the parents of JFK have been notified via email. The staff have been notified via email. And we do have an opportunity for people to ask questions to the candidate at both of, both of those public sessions. There's a Google form on the district website, which people can use to submit questions. I will be going through the, the questions and, and finding the high frequency ones, probably combining a number of similar ones. And the, the format will be, I will just ask questions from the list and candidate will have an opportunity to reply. And then members of the faculty as well as parents who attend the open session will be invited to provide me some feedback on their impressions. Obviously, this was the only candidate that was sent up by the screening committee. That, that speaks really highly of, of their impressions of him. I met with him on Friday and we had a very long and very good interview. So I'm just waiting to hear what the faculty and parents feel about him before making my final determination. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements from members of the school committee? Um, Dr. Provost, I don't, I know that there's not a superintendent report. Did you, was there some announcement you planned on making at this point in the meeting?
I just, I just wanted to speak to many people who may be interested in what may be coming tomorrow as a result of that executive session. I know that there were, that there are employees now who've been working under the assumption that our tentative agreement would be viewed favorably by the committee. Obviously, the final vote won't take place until tomorrow, but I think based on the discussion that I was just part of, I have every reason to believe that we'll have a successful ratification vote tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Provost. Any other announcements? Hearing none. We'll now move into reports and recommendations. And the first item is item A on the agenda, which is an ongoing agenda item. We've had on our last several agendas and probably on a future discussion and vote, school reopening models. And I'll turn now to Dr. Provost.
Thank you. Annie, I wonder if you would be able to share the document that went to the members of the committee, just so.
I'm happy to. Give me a minute to get it up.
Okay. While you're doing that, I will also be opening it on my computer. Okay. And Annie, while you're, while you're loading that onto the screen, I'll just start talking. So let me begin by discussing what's not in the report. Notably, this report doesn't include a plan for in-person instruction for all students. This is a follow-up to our last school committee meeting at which you asked for more detail on three school reopening scenarios. Since that time, DESI has released its initial reopening guidance. DESI is also asking districts to prepare for three possibilities. One of those is all remote learning. That's what we envisioned as our scenario one. The state also asks us to prepare a hybrid learning scenario in which some instruction is delivered in person and some is delivered remotely. Both scenario two and five, which we'll be discussing tonight, would be considered hybrid learning models. However, the main thrust of DESI's reopening guide is focuses on in-person instruction. The phrase in-person instruction occurs 57 times in the reopening guidance. And more than half of those times, it is to call districts to prioritize developing plans for in-person instruction or to discuss the benefits of in-person instruction over a hybrid model or fully remote. So I don't have a model of fully in-person instruction explicitly outlined tonight, but we can start discussing that in some detail based on the information that's included in the two hybrid scenarios. The other thing is that this report doesn't discuss staffing patterns for any of the hybrid models. For the fully remote or fully in-person instruction, staffing patterns are straightforward. But either of the hybrid models will have many details to be worked out in terms of staffing patterns to support them. So that's a problem that we can move to once we've settled on a single hybrid model. So I think maybe at this point, we can just congratulate the district leadership and the school committee. You anticipated two of the three options that would eventually be requested by the school committee, I mean by the, by the state. And so I think we're very far ahead of the game because of that. So Annie, if you could move on to the next one. First, I'd like to talk about the survey results. That also was a part of our discussion last week. One of the things, or two weeks ago, one of the things the school committee wanted me to report on were attitudes of caregivers around their, their hopes for reopening. And we did have a survey that was open at the time. It has since closed. We ended with, with about 650 responses. So it's certainly not comprehensive of the entire universe of, of caregivers, but it is a very robust sample size for a district of 2,700 students. So before going into this, I want to just thank Kathy Cassal and Andy Kerner, as well as their UMass grad student Zachary Santana, who were the ones who went through all of the qualitative responses and summarized these themes for us. So just going through the high level results. Caregivers of both elementary and secondary students are very concerned about their students' lack of academic progress during the closure. I think we heard about some of that in public comment tonight. Caregivers of both elementary and secondary students are very concerned about their students' social and emotional well-being as a result of the closure pandemic. And I know that has been a theme that certainly has stood out to me as I've gotten parent responses to the different opening reopening models that are on the agenda tonight. Also, caregivers shared a number of obstacles in being able to support their children's learning during closure. The most frequent response is that caregivers gave was the impossibility of juggling demands of working full-time with homeschooling. Although this is really remote learning, I think a lot of parents experienced this as a form of conscripted homeschooling. Supporting children's motivation to do school for elementary parents was difficult in shifting from playtime to work time. Being able to manage and prioritize time and tasks was a challenge. And there was confusion about the multiplicity of platforms being used within the district. There were many online learning platforms that were being used because we had to start remote learning with very little time to to prepare. And so teachers were left in a position of having to sort of launch out on their own. And one of the results was that many of them chose their own learning platforms. And what we heard from a lot of parents was that they were trying to manage their children's ability to access three or more different learning platforms in the course of the day being used by different parents. There is also not enough feedback on assignments, inconsistent messaging, vague instructions, or them being unsure if the child actually did the work. Caregivers also identified some district actions that might have been helpful. Or I'm sorry, that, that have been helpful. One was regular communication, updates, robocalls and emails. The Chromebook technology was seen as a help by parents. And several individual teachers were given a shout out for their particular actions during the closure. I just heard it. Okay, I just got a text message to speak louder from Annie, so I will do that. Sorry. So moving on to the next slide, Annie.
Is this, this is the next one?
That's right. That's right. So caregivers also gave us feedback about remote learning. They expressed disappointment and concerns with a number of things, including the reduced level of academic rigor provided during the closure, limited opportunities for synchronous learning during the closure, limited amount of feedback they, their child received on work that was completed, and confusion about different platforms as we discussed above. However, I also want to point out that many caregivers thank teachers and the district for doing the best they could in an unprecedented and very challenging time. We had some suggestions for continued learning at both the elementary and the secondary level. And there were several items that were characterized as being overwhelmingly representative of the, the responses from caregivers. And in that category included things such as caregivers wanting much more synchronous learning opportunities for their children, more Zooms, more required classes, more face-to-face interaction with teachers, with teachers and peers, and more feedback from teachers on student work. Essentially, caregivers want school to look and feel more like school. Also overwhelmingly, caregivers wanted deeper learning, higher expectations, and more academic rigor. Also, in the overwhelmingly category, caregivers wanted more support and more consistency in platforms, schedules, routines, et cetera. And at the secondary level, there was a particular concern for more support for mathematics instruction. And caregivers wanted opportunities to be planned that allowed their children to have fun. We lack social interaction with peers that is non-academic and in focus and content. And so Annie, if you could go on to the next page. When asked how their children feel about returning to school, about a third said their children were excited and happy. About a third said their children were worried, anxious, or afraid. And about a third said they were ambivalent, excited to see their friends, but worried about the virus. And so some concerns that caregivers, that caregivers shared about returning to the fall were concerns that their child would get the virus and transmit the virus to vulnerable family members, concerns that their children would not follow safety protocols involving social distancing, hand washing, and mask wearing, that their children will continue to be socially isolated if we stay with remote-only instruction, that their children will continue to fall behind academically if we continue with only remote instruction, and that they will not be able to manage their children's school schedule and academic needs while also returning to work themselves. And so I need the last piece of the survey. So we did have some results that were particular to transportation as we discussed in the last meeting. Transportation is a linchpin for all of the return to school models. Seven percent overall said that they did not plan to send their child back to school until a vaccine is developed. That was the whole sample, whether or not they, they use the school-provided transportation. Eleven percent, and this is specific to people who do use the school transportation, 11% of our current riders said they would discontinue school transportation. Three percent said they have not used school transportation before, but will need to do so now. So overall, we project a seven percent decline in school attendance and a 15% decline in school ridership. And someone just texted me again. So still asking for more volume. Okay, I'm gonna try to shout really loud. Sorry. Okay. So going to scenario one. This is substantially remote learning. Okay, just fuzzy sounding. Maybe I'm actually too close to the microphone. Maybe I won't yell, but just. Okay. So this is our scenario where students stay substantially remote. It's one of the scenarios that the state has required of us. So with the emphasis on in-person learning being the top priority for reopening, we expect that any remote learning model will need to conform to a more stringent set of requirements, including things such as validated teacher contact time and attendance. Based on that, we believe a fully remote model will require substantial additional investments. Based on that, we believe a fully remote model will require substantial additional investments in instructional hardware, software, and professional development. Our current one-to-one program covers students in grades three to 12. To prepare for a potential third stage of remote learning, we need about additional, 600 additional Chromebooks at an estimated cost of $120,000. We're also recommending obtaining additional licenses to some new online learning, obtaining additional licenses to some platforms we currently use, and obtaining additional platforms to some new online learning platforms. Specifically, we will need more licenses for A to Z, Raz Kids, and Lexia. The cost of these additional licenses would be about $40,000. Additionally, we are recommending two new online resources to support our math programs. Open up Kidum and Dreambox, which would cost $25,000 and $34,000 respectively. We think of these items totaling $219,000 as the fixed costs for a remote learning scenario. Where we may have some flexibility is in the professional development to support the remote learning. At the last meeting, I felt strong encouragement to expand professional development for remote learning. So I asked our tech team to put together a wish list for the best possible remote learning professional development. Most of the items could be taught by external or internal facilitators, or a combination of both. But the real cost is staff time. It would take three to five days for a teacher to complete the full remote learning training being recommended. So the cost to the district could be as high as $350,000. Some of these costs could be offset by reductions that could be made if we move to a remote learning model, or by new funds that may become available to assist with reopening. One of the things we've heard in our, our conference calls with the commissioner is that there is a, a new, there'll be new funds available to support reopening plans. And the, um, the range is up to $225 per student. So I have no idea what our increment will be, or how much will be allowed on a per pupil basis, but that could potentially be a significant source of funding to support this. So moving on to just discuss the, discuss the remote learning. I can see you're there already, Annie. Thank you. So these are the sessions. I'm not gonna read everything, but just to, to explain what the sessions are. We'd like to do sessions on connections, which is focused on building a sense of community during the shutdown, communicating through ClassDojo, which is one of the platforms that we will be supporting. As we surveyed our staff, it seemed that ClassDojo was the primary platform being used for young children, and Google Classroom was the primary platform being used for older children. So in our professional development plan, we are planning on only supporting those two models as a way of addressing the parent concern about too many different learning platforms being used in the district. Executive processing for the teacher, which is just a, a way to help teachers manage the reality we've all been living in with hundreds of emails on a daily basis. And executive processing for the students, because they've been subjected to the same thing as well, especially since many of the learning platforms send students reminders about work due. They've also, they've also been challenged by excessive communication about work in the remote learning environment. Organizing your class, organizing your Google Classroom, again, as we said, that would be the platform we, we support for, for older students. Supporting reluctant learners. Turning your materials digital. A flip-it session on blended and flipped classrooms, which may be especially helpful if we go to a remote, not only in a remote, fully remote session, but also in a hybrid scenario where students may be taking one or two days a week for remote instruction and the rest of the days being with person-to-person instruction. A flipped classroom model could, could work really well in that scenario. Entirely online, where do I start? This is, this is a session helping teachers kind of think about not what we had in the past, which is a scenario where we started in face-to-face and built relationships with students, but how do we do it if our class begins online and we don't know when we'll ever be able to meet the students? Continuing, getting off the screen, ways to implement learning that don't involve technology. Providing meaningful feedback, which is directly responsive to one of the results of the survey. Cross-curricular collaboration. Personalizing remote learning, supporting the parent role in remote learning. And finally, non-teachers and supporting teachers and students in remote learning. So the total professional development time for this would be 20 to 30 hours. And as I mentioned, I think that's where a great deal of the cost would be associated, just paying staff for, for all that time. So that's scenario one. Moving on to scenario two. This is, this is the model where elementary students have face-to-face instruction and secondary students have remote. In this model, we're considering sixth grade to be part of elementary school. One of the things we did when the Department of Ed released its guidance is we looked at what we could do with different, with different distancing requirements. We heard a lot tonight about three feet and six feet. But I think it's important for the committee and the community to realize that those are not the only options. There's a whole range of distances between six feet and three feet. And so we just took them at one-foot increments. So the models were initially designed at six feet. If we remained at six feet, the configuration would have to look like this. Bridge Street in Leeds would become pre-K to three. Jackson Street and Ryan Road would be K to three, because they don't have preschools. JFK would have grades four and five. And the high school would have grade six. Seven and 12 would be remote as per the model. Some other adjustments is, are that the library would have to be used as classroom space at Leeds. And as I said, alternative staffing would be required. That's going to be for all of these, so I'm not gonna keep saying it. But as I said, that's the next level of this problem. So if we go with this model and you want me to develop it more, the next thing I would expect you to ask me to, to come back with is how would you staff it? So if we go to five feet, then Bridge Street in Leeds could be pre-K to four. JFK would be grades five and six, and the high school would be unused. Grade seven through 12 would remain remote. In this scenario, the base room at Bridge Street would have to be used as a class. And the library and community room would have to be used as classes at Jackson Street and JFK. If we went to four-foot spacing, Bridge Street and Leeds would be pre-K through five. Jackson Street and Ryan Road would be K through five. JFK would have grade six. And the old, and the high school would be unused. Grade seven through 12 would still be remote. The only adjustment required in, at four feet is that the base classroom would still have to be used as a class. And so moving on to scenario five. This is a scenario that originally started as a four-day rotation from elementary and a one-day rotation for secondary. And as we, we
John, we're losing your audio. Dr. Provost?
I just sent him a message and pulled him out.
Okay.
We'll get him back.
Is his phone connection still there, Annie? I see his screen connection.
He's, he came in in a different way tonight. I don't think he's using his phone.
He said he's, um, he sent a message saying that he's gonna call in.
Okay. Okay. So folks at home, we're just waiting for Dr. Provost to reconnect his audio connection through a different means. Okay. Still waiting for him.
There he is.
Okay. Dr. Provost, are you back with us?
I can hear him very softly.
Okay.
I'm back. Sorry to the, to the committee and to the hundred and forty callers.
John, I think you have to mute, um, I think you need to mute your other device because we're getting an echo.
Okay.
I know you're a Yankee fan, but the Lou Gehrig thing doesn't work well.
Well, I thought the other audio wasn't working, but I guess it decided to work.
Yes.
All right, so looking at scenario five, as I was saying. So this was a scenario that was originally a four-day rotation for elementary and a one-day rotation for secondary. And the, the feedback that we received from this was very overwhelmingly in the direction of doing everything we could to create more face-to-face opportunities for students at the secondary level. So as we were working through this, we looked for ways to try to increase the amount of face-to-face contact time for secondary students, especially at, once the, the state released its guidance and saw that we have some different opportunities we could provide. So Annie, if you could just advance this. So we'll start with the original model, which is six-foot distancing. With a six-foot social distance, Bridge Street and Leeds would be pre-K through four. Jackson Street and Ryan Road would be K to four. One of the adjustments that comes in right away in order to fit those students is we'd have to do half-day kindergarten, which is permissible. It essentially doubles the amount of space you have available in the kindergarten classrooms. But it, it comes at a, it comes at a cost. There's so much, so much research on the benefits of full-day kindergarten. It, it certainly isn't something that I would want to see happen. But as we think about the, the balancing of public health, educational outcomes, it's, it's something that would be in the mix at the six-foot level. Jackson Street, I'm sorry, JFK would be grades five and six. And then at high school, we would follow a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule with split into three groups. So Group A would meet on Monday. Group would meet on Wednesday, and Group C would meet on Friday. Also, seventh and eighth would be meeting at the high school. They would be meeting at the high school on Tuesday. The, the seventh and eighth graders would be split into two groups, Group A and Group B. And Group A would meet at the high school on Tuesday. Meet on Thursday. So at four, I'm sorry, at five feet, it's pre-K through four, Bridge Street, and K to four, I'm sorry, Bridge Street and Leeds, or Jackson Street and Ryan Road, without needing half-day kindergarten, could have full-day K. Base room would have to be used as a class at Bridge Street. Grades five and six would be housed. Library and community room would be used as classrooms at Jackson Street and JFK. And we'd still be following that three-day schedule at, three-day schedule for high school students and two-day schedule for, for the seventh and eighth graders. At the four-foot level, things start to get, I think, really significantly better in terms of in-person time. The fourth, at four feet, we could sit pre-five at Bridge Street and Leeds, and K to five at Jackson Street and Ryan Road. Those are the same grades they have now. We would have to be flexible with space. The base room would have to be used as a class. The community room would have to be used, and the country would have to be used as a classroom at Jackson Street. But then the, the, we could offer, and, and, and sixth grade, the, the schedule we could offer for students in grades six through 12 becomes a little bit more ageist. So sixth graders would still be going every day. But what, what could also happen is seventh and eighth could fit at JFK. You just couldn't fit the entire seventh and eighth grade at, as, when you had the sixth grade there at the same time. So you'd have to fit, you'd have to break the seventh and eighth grade into two groups. But the seventh and eighth grade, Group A, could now get two days a week at JFK. And the seventh and eighth grade, Group B, could also get at JFK. And Wednesday could be a day to provide additional instruction for at-risk learners from either Group A or Group B, or both Group A and Group B. Because none of this, um, JFK would need to go to the high school, that also creates more opportunity for students at the high school. And we're able to hold about 75% of the high school population at a four-foot social distance. So what we're, would be, what's typically known as a waterfall schedule. Although in a waterfall schedule, you're usually rotating and dropping periods. Here we'd be rotating and dropping groups of students. So we'd split the high school into groups of four students. And three of the four would meet every day. The group that was not meeting would be rotated. So just to give you an example of what a week might look like. On Monday, we could have Group A, B, and C in the high school and D remote. On Tuesday, B, C, and D would be in the high school and A would be remote. On Wednesday, C, D, and A would be in the high school and B would be remote. On Thursday, D, A, and B would be at the high school and C would be remote. On Friday, you'd be back to your first three groups, A, B, and C with D remote. Next Monday, everything would be moved down one position. So you'd start the next week with B, C, and D in, and one group remote. So as you could see with this, students at the high school would typically get three out of, I'm sorry, it would typically get three or four days out of the week in the high school. So that, um, that's in sort of a tweak on scenario five that provides much more person-to-person instruction than we thought would be possible previously. So that's, that's what I have on, on the new reopening. So that's, that's what I have on, on the new reopening scenarios. And I guess I should, we'd just like to take a break now to, to receive some guidance from the committee.
Okay, um, thank you. I'll ask, uh, committee members if they want to, um, raise hands to ask questions. Member Kaufman, you have your hand raised.
Yes, um, did you mean community members or committee members?
At this point, the lady's referring to committee members.
Yeah, I, I thought you said community members. I just want to clarify, we're just taking questions from committee, right?
That's correct, we're, we're, um, we're in deliberation right now.
Sure. So Dr. Provost, I have just a few clarifying questions. So first of all, on, on scenario two, can you hear me, Dr. Provost?
Yes.
Okay, so on scenario two, I'm wondering, um, I don't have it here in front of me, but you had, for the four and five-foot options, you have the high school closed. And for the six-foot option, you have grade six at JFK and, at the high school, sorry. And I'm just wondering if we were gonna go to the four- or five-foot options, would you be able to, uh, fit in additional grade levels? For example, would grade levels seven and maybe even grade level eight be able to fit in, uh, since the high school is not being used at all under two of those four and five-foot?
We definitely, yes, we definitely could fit in more, um, more classes under those scenarios. The reason I didn't put those in the model is that this, this scenario specifically said that seven through twelve would remain remote. And also, scenario five looks at, it essentially starts with the same, um, configurations of students. So if you wanted to know what they could look like, what, for example, you could use the unused high school for. In this scenario, you just look at scenario five and see where we could place the classes.
Okay, so I mean, just, I don't know where, where we're gonna end up tonight if we, if we haven't narrowed it down to one. And I do appreciate the fact when we do ultimately narrow it down to one, you'll be able to really dig even further into some of the unanswered questions. But I don't, I, I, I would not anticipate that anybody would have any objection to fitting in more students under a very safe scenario. And scenario two, if the high school is closed, I think that may be adding, uh, to scenario two, what it would look like for additional students to come to school every day, uh, at the high school at a four-foot, four- or five-foot, distance might be helpful for us.
So I guess what I'm saying is you, you actually see that when you look at scenario five?
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time because, did you, you took it down, Annie, so you want me to bring it back up? Annie, is it preferable for us, or John is, Dr. Provost?
How's that? Can you see it now? Are you looking at scenario two?
So I, I think, Annie, actually, if you go to scenario five?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what you see here is essentially what we would still do under scenario two to fit in additional classes if, um, that was the desire. Because, um, basically at, at five feet, or even at six feet, you, you can see what we could do with the high school. We could, we could bring students in at the same, um, in the same ways, except, um, I'm sorry, not at the six-foot level, because at the six-foot level, we do have, uh, sixth graders at the high school. But at the five and four-feet level, it would be basically the same scenario because at that level, um, all of the fifth and sixth graders are at JFK.
Where, yeah, but the difference, if I understand it right, is the seventh and eighth graders, which I'm trying to put into scenario two. The current scenario two has pre-K through six going to school in person every day, doesn't it?
Both of them do.
Right, but the scenario two does not have seventh and eighth graders going to school at all, I believe, right?
That's correct.
So I'm just wondering, I, I'm not getting your, I'm not getting the scenario that would be the same. If we wanted to add two more grades to scenario two, or at least one more grade, so it goes pre-K to seven, couldn't we do that? So they come to, I guess the difference is couldn't they come to school every day if they use the high school?
So, and-
As opposed to every other day, or, um, yeah.
So if you, if you went to scenario two, the, I guess what I was saying is if you want all students to get some, some face-to-face time, the, the way to do it would be by layering on the scenario five, um, configurations onto scenario two, because in both of, because you're having the, the one to six go every day. So if you wanted to make two difference than what you see in scenario five, what, what you would say is we don't want necessarily every grade to go, but maybe just in, just increase to grade eight or, or whatever you, you would like to direct. What scenario five already does is it tries to get as much time as possible for seventh through twelfth graders while the, the grade K through six are attending school every day.
Okay, so I understand that. I think that, that's what Watson five, I think I was just trying to present two as a, very much a different option. And so in scenario two, um, right now, it's every day for, uh, pre-K through six with total remote for seven through twelve. And I'm just wondering, in that scenario too, if you can look into making it every day for pre-K through eight and remote just for high school kids.
Okay.
And the, do you understand? So the way you would do that is by opening up the high school at the four and five-foot level. And I do appreciate you saying you can combine two and five to get another scenario, but just for, just for our discussion about distinct scenarios, that just would be helpful if they fit. But it struck me as a, not using, not using a complete school at four and five feet is not taking the best opportunity we can to have even more kids come every day.
Yes, um, they, they definitely, you, we definitely could do that. There are approximately four hundred and fifty students in grades seven and eight. So if you went even to the five-foot level, you could, you could probably put seventh and eighth at the high school.
Right. Um, I do think that might make a difference for some people, but I, but I'm just, okay, thank you. My, another question, and hopefully this won't be as long. In the scenarios that we're referring to, is there an opportunity to take adult space? And I'm thinking of like department offices or staff offices, maybe even main offices, spaces that adults might be too close together and move those over to other unused shared space, uh, within the school buildings?
So when we were, uh, building this out, we were actually looking at the blueprints. What we have is a, is a situation where most, all of the, um, standard classrooms are already being used as classrooms. And the additional spaces that we have for faculty rooms or offices are already much smaller than classrooms. So they don't really buy us anything. Where we do have the opportunity to create some more space inside the building is, is in the libraries and the community room at, um, at JFK.
Yeah, I think just, I-
I, I'm reluctant to use the cafeteria because it just is not an optimal place for learning.
Yeah, I'm, um, Dr. Provost, I don't think that's what I'm asking, let me clarify please. I'm talking about helping adults not get near each other. That certainly is the, um, that's a concern that's not gonna go away. So I'm wondering if staff that are now in spaces that are too close together can use, for example, the library or the gymnasium or somewhere where we can alleviate some of the concern of the adults in the building. When I worked in schools, for example, and I'm pretty sure we still have this, you know, there's the department space, the English department, math department, et cetera, are in a, you know, a, a shared space that probably would not be conducive to people feeling comfortable. And I'm wondering, can adults be moved and/or have the option of working in much larger areas?
I think that is, I think that is something the cafeterias could be useful for. Because they're, they're not going to be used for serving lunch and they're not, I, I don't think appropriate to have students in all day long. But they might be more appropriate, um, spaces for staff to be able to go to for their breaks and for, um, some of their workspaces outside of the classroom.
Okay, and I have a couple more questions. I'm gonna pass except one final quick question. When would PD be offered in the scenarios that you presented to us about professional development? Is this, is, over the summer or is this spread out over a longer period of time?
It would, as we envisioned it, it would be over the summer so that we were ready to go if we were starting in a remote learning scenario, or if we had, so that we'd be ready if we had to switch over to a remote learning scenario. That's where most of the cost of the PD comes in because we would have to pay staff for that time.
Okay, theoretically though, if it was too much or we couldn't get enough teachers to have the available time to do so, some of it could be switched, um, until after the school year starts? Is that possible?
Well, a, as you know, we don't have a lot of professional development time in the calendar, so that would be challenging. Because I, I believe, I believe when school starts, we're going to have, um, we're gonna need all hands on deck. I, I have heard that there may be some relaxation of the one hundred and eighty-day mandate for the upcoming year in order to provide some more time for professional development. If that happens, we could use some of that additional time, um, but that's not set in stone yet.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Provost. All my colleagues have their hands up, so I'll, I'll, I'll pass, pass the baton, thank you.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Thank you. Um, I am happy to see, um, some specific plans about, um, about professional development, you know, to, to support our educators, uh, in terms of the remote learning platforms. I'm also, um, happy to see that, that a more robo, robust platform for, you know, for learning is, is being thought through here, uh, sorry, a, a more robust plan for remote learning is being thought through here. Um, there were some questions about, uh, what platforms we were going to use and like going down to, to one, like a more, um, comprehensive platform, meaning something like Moodle, something like that. So that's one question. I'm just gonna say all my questions and then you can kind of answer them all together. I would also like to have more information on how we are going to determine if it's actually safe to return in person. We're all seeing the, the headlines from across the country of, of states who have reopened too quickly. Uh, and so I, I just would like to, to know how we are making this as a, as a information-based decision rather than, um, rather than a, a decision based on, on guidance from, from politicians in Boston. Um, I'm, I'm quite confused about the, uh, the three-feet guideline from the state. The six-feet guidelines is what the CDC recommends. It is the communication that has come in, from every corner of our lives. Now, we stand six feet apart in, in every public place that we're going. So I can imagine that students will be very, very confused if they go to school and are told that three feet is okay, and then they go to Applebee's and they're told, no, three feet is not okay. So I, I just wanna kind of, for us to think about that a bit. Also, um, I imagine that if we give the guidance of six feet, that that six feet is only gonna get smaller. So six feet might end up in practice being fewer than six feet. So if then the guidance is three feet, that's gonna end up being fewer than three feet, uh, just in practice, knowing the way that young people are. I would like to hear your thoughts, Superintendent, on the idea of starting early. I know that the, the colleges are, are, are doing this and, uh, and I know that we don't have as much air conditioning as they do. So I'm, I'm cognizant of, of those, uh, concerns as well. So my main questions that I would like to hear back from you on are about, uh, a more robust platform, how we're going to determine if it's safe. How, I don't know, you don't need to respond to the six-feet thing, I just said my piece about that. And then your thoughts, uh, on starting early.
Okay, so with respect to the, the learning platform, I, I do think that the two that we're narrowing in on will be well-supported by faculty and by our community. We arrived at, at this level by asking staff what, what they've been using and they've been finding effective. And it, originally, we had hoped to just have one, one platform. But we found that there was a really strong divide between students working with very young students up and, up to grade two and then students who are working, uh, I mean, the staff who are working with older students. And it split down, it, it split, um, really strongly into Classroom Dojo and Google Classroom. I would say more than ninety percent of the staff fell into one of those two camps, which is really an amazing amount of agreement, um, for the faculty on any issue that I've ever worked on them with. So I think that, that's, that's a strong place to start from and I wanna honor that. I think, I think of Moodle as something that is, certainly, I've had more experience with it in the adult ed realm than in K to twelve. I know it can be used also with high school students, but I, it would be a new platform for our, our staff to learn and one that is being used by almost nobody now. So I, I just think that's adding another level of complication. And as I understood the, the feedback from the parents, it was really not that they disliked any of the platforms or felt they weren't, um, strong enough to, to carry the instruction. It, what they found confusing was the, the sheer number of them in use in the district. So I think if we can get to, um, a, a smaller number, we'll be, we'll be making some progress. With respect to the three feet, I mean, I put six, five, and four deliberately out there because I, I think there is the range and, and there's a balance point that, that has to be met somewhere in the community. And so just showing you what can be, uh, obtained at, at the different levels is, is what I have for you right now. In terms of starting early, I, um, initially, when I heard that, I, I, I think I, that, that, um, suggestion came in an email from a parent. And I thought that it was really, um, I thought it was a good idea. And then someone reminded me of the experience that we had, uh, two years ago when there was a heat wave in September. And there was an incredible outcry, uh, that, by, from faculty and staff as well as parents about the, um, about how, how inhumane it was to have students in school with those conditions. And so starting early, I think, just means increasing the, uh, increasing the, the probability that that's gonna happen and then having us faced with a choice of, do we start canceling all the days that we scheduled early because it's now too hot for kids to be in school? Well, well, on this topic, I would like to address the issue of windows because I saw it come up in, um, some of the, in the chat. There is a problem with windows at JFK. And what we've told the facilities team is every classroom needs to have a working window or else it needs to be taken offline. So in our, um, in our planning for the space at JFK, we haven't completely, um, gone out to a hundred percent of classrooms because we think we will lose some classrooms just to not having functioning windows. So that adds another, um, another element to my thinking about starting early.
Okay, member Voss, you have your hand up next.
Thank you. I, I, I'm trying to put my questions in two themes. So I think I'll ask the first theme first and get some answers, and then the second theme second. And my two themes are safety and my second theme is gonna be the scenarios and how we get equitable classroom teacher time for all grades. So let me start with safety questions. I've communicated some with the superintendent. I've heard from many, many community members. I appreciate all the incredibly hard work everybody's putting into this, um, on all of the various teams. I, I, so would I say I'm not trying to be disrespectful of anyone? I know we're all trying to do what's best for us collectively. But I do wanna say, as a scientist, reading the DESI report on Thursday was really concerning to me. I wanna get- I wanna get kids back to school. I know we all do. I know parents are worried about how they're gonna work. But this report came across to me as something where we were not, I, I did not feel like it was portraying safety as high as it should. And things that really stood out to me were research that was reviewed in terms of how kids don't spread this disease as much as adults. And there's a lot of research that suggests that and they cited a lot of it, but they didn't cite other things. And in science, when you cite certain sides and not other sides, it's called cherry picking. And I'm just concerned that they didn't say, okay, well, there's these other things that go on. Let's tell the public why they're less important such, and, and I'm not gonna go into great detail. It's just when you see that kind of thing, it's a concern. And that leads me to the six feet versus five feet versus four feet. Everything we're hearing is six feet. Everything we're hearing is this virus spreads when you breathe and cough close to somebody. And I wanna really encourage us to not plan for anything less than six feet. At a higher ed level, we're planning for more than six feet and it's not because we have extra space. There's a lot of, a lot of sacrifices being made. FEMA, FEMA guidelines are telling us to plan for much more than six feet. So I want us to stick with the six feet and not go into planning for less feet. We need to keep everyone safe. If the virus changes and in November or December things look different, sure, let's move the distance down. But right now, I really encourage us to be more of a cautionary principle and plan for six feet. And I don't know, Dr. Provost, if you've had a chance, but I'm curious. I guess my first health question is have we talked to our leadership in our North Hampton Department of Health about four versus five versus six feet? How do people outside of the educational, the public educational field feel about this? That's my first safety question.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm, I'm really glad you asked that because it makes me think that I didn't answer one of Member Seraphy Cox's questions. So let me go back on that. Actually, I, I guess it's a question or an answer to both of you. So yeah, so you've seen the reopening teams. One of our reopening teams is the pandemic response team. It includes the city's health director and our school physician. I have reviewed the plans with the, the city's health director and her, her, her response is that she doesn't see anything in here that goes against her recommendations as the chief public health official for the city of North Hampton. She does say that as much as you can space, the better. But there's, there's nothing with the six or the five-fourths that I've discussed here that raises red flags for her. Of course, we didn't talk about the three at some point. You know, I think the state is gonna have a, it, look at the three because one of the, one of the directives we know is coming to us is a plan to get all students into school. And I, as, as you see that, it's not possible at five feet or four feet. The only way that we'll be able to provide the third scenario for the state is if we think about three feet. And that, so that three-foot number is a number that isn't, isn't, hasn't been discussed with our local health officials. So that's the one I can't talk to you about yet. But when we get ready to make that report to the state, we will certainly vet that through the health department and through our school physician as well.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna say for the record, I'm really uncomfortable with that. If you put kids four or five feet apart, teachers have to walk in between them. I, I really think we have to plan for six where even that seems minimal. And I'll just say that now, if the virus changes in a few months, obviously, we can be flexible and we should be. But I think we should start with a plan and if the state wants all the kids back, we're gonna have to do it on partial kids back at a certain time, staggering groups, and we're gonna have to have more funding because it's not, where I am absolutely against sending everybody back if it's not safer, safe enough to. Continuing on that theme, distance apart is important and we've talked about this before. The other things are the amount of time that you're exposed and the air handling systems. How is the air flowing? So I'm curious to know if we have any updates on how the airflow, and I don't mean just one open window, but do we have a plan or have we already made measurements in classrooms to ensure that the air is recirculating completely, at least say, I think the number I read, old buildings twice an hour, complete overhaul. I don't know for sure that's the right number, but what is our plan for making sure we're circulating air?
Yes, so thank you for that. And that, that also came to us in a question from the public. After receiving that email, I began working with central services on strategy for obtaining a study of airflow within the building. Where we've landed is that the appropriate party to do that is a commissioning agent. A commissioning agent is a third party that the district would be using anytime it does an MSBA project that involves HVAC. So it, it basically is just someone who's certified by the state to look at the work done by the vendors who install the HVAC system to make sure that adequate ventilation is being provided. So we do have a couple of commissioning agents that we're in discussions with to do a study of the airflow within our buildings. And I'm, I'm looking at the, the information that was put out by the, the study from the Harvard School of Public Health that I saw this weekend, I think probably you saw this weekend as well, as, as kind of a good baseline, just to see where we stand up or how we stack up to that measure.
Okay, thank you. And, and Dr. Provost and I did email about this study. We both came across it. There was a study, for people in the public and others out there, there was a study published on Friday from the Harvard School of Public Health about really a guide, and I think it's a, it's a much more cautious guide and it has a lot more details in it of what districts might do to get kids back to school and I highly recommend it. And then just the final thing in terms of safety. Could you just given us an update? Last meeting, you said you would look into potentially putting tents up. I think we've received a lot more emails, a lot of ideas from a range of people about how students could use that as a place to connect in person. Teachers could use it as a place to perhaps move a lot of their work outdoors where especially teachers who feel like, for whatever reason, it's not safe for them to be in a classroom, could potentially spend more one-on-one or, or small group time with their students. Are we still looking into these tents and where does that stand?
Yes, we're in discussions with several vendors on tents. I, I think that we'll, we'll have a good outcome there. We are a little bit at a loss for options with Bridge Street School because they're completely surrounded by pavement with the exception of Lamphorn Park, which we don't control. I'm thinking of those tents as potentially good spaces to do some of the activities that have been specifically cited in the, the studies as dangerous for indoor, like any kind of woodwind, any kind of brass instrument, choral music. Those, those types of activities where students are sort of engaged in deliberately spreading their voices and their sound as widely as possible, which I think are really a high priority to get outside, but other, other classes as well.
Thank, I, and I, I'll just add, I think, I don't know if we can get access to the Fairgrounds or the Sheldon Field that I know it's not right next door to Bridge Street School, but thinking a little bit about what's around there and see if we could get permission for that, if it made sense to the, to the school leaders there. Okay, and I guess a transition for me for a few questions on the various scenarios is just to summarize safety and say they really are related to scenarios because I, I still, I, I know we're working on this, figuring out how many students are gonna be in remote no matter what and how many teachers and what that looks like. And it seems like we have quite a bit of work to do to figure out how to make that happen. Since our last meeting, I, I know many of us have had just numerous conversations and emails and I've really become convinced, I've actually talked to a lot of students too. And not everybody's gonna agree with this. Every, some people are gonna feel really differently and, and I think we just have to respect different perspectives. But what I'm hearing pretty loud and clear and I, I agree with, and you all know I'm not one to agree if I don't actually agree, is that all of our students need time with their peers and with their teachers. And whether that happens under a tent or in a classroom might have to do a little bit with grade levels and discussing what works for the group of people. But I think for me, the scenario two really doesn't work, even though I expressed interest in it last time. This idea of putting young kids in the high school, paying for the cost of getting various furniture there, I don't think there's really enough teachers to accommodate that. But more importantly, seventh, kids in seventh to 12th grade need equitable access. And I have talked to Dr. Provost about this too. I, I really think we need to come up with a plan where kids are having access to school at similar rates, no matter what grade they are in, whether it's, everybody gets roughly 25%, maybe transitioning to 50% if they want it as the year goes on. And for that reason, scenario five still doesn't really work very well for me either. And I, I hope we can explore some of the other, some combination of the other scenarios where we can give all of our students that access. And at the same time, we have to figure out ways where teachers who can't safely teach can work remotely with their students. And somebody said this in public comment today, this is a horrible virus and we're all really rushing to get back to school, or many of us are. But it's very likely in eight to 12 months, things are gonna change a lot. And so if we're safe and careful and do our best for the next six or so months and are in it for the long run, I think we need to really look out for each other as best as possible. And anyway, so I guess my question as I leave is, are we considering some other scenarios to get those older students more face time or where do we stand on that?
So the other, the other scenarios were rejected by the school committee at the last meeting. If you want me to go back to any of those, if the committee wants me to go back to any of those, they certainly can direct me to do that tonight. I do think that scenario five addresses the concern about getting older students equitable face time better than, than any of the other scenarios. They're at least equitable to each other. And for the high school in particular, it's, it's very close. It's just the difference of one day a week. It's the seventh and eighth that are a little bit, a little bit disadvantaged by scenario number five. And I haven't been able to think of a way to tweak that, but the other option is to see if we can make that a little bit more equitable.
And, and, and let me just be clear. I, when I say equitable, I don't mean exactly the same amount of time. But for me, both two and five are really different experiences and I think it needs to be tweaked quite a bit. And just so my colleagues know, I have emailed after the last meeting. I, I don't think it was, these things were rejected. We were presented with 10 scenarios at the last meeting and asked to digest an enormous amount of information and, and were asked for feedback. But I really hope that the conversation's still open and we listen to our community and what people want because there is no right answer and things are changing. So I, I hope this isn't off the table. I certainly know I've communicated over the last two weeks quite a bit with you about this one issue. So thank you.
Member Levy, you're the next member with your hand up.
Thank you. I'll, I'll share at the oft, at the onset that Member Voss just articulated a lot of what I was also gonna say. So I will say it a little bit more briefly just to, just to share my perspective and then I do have a few questions. I do very sincerely wanna thank everybody who's been working on this, these scenarios and, and thinking, thinking about how to make this work for their dedication and their time. This is, as folks have already said, incredibly challenging and I appreciate the, the hard work that's going into this. I, I agree with Member Voss. I'm in the same boat that I was more a fan of scenario five in our last meeting and since then have heard from so many community members and really thought more about the, the real need for face-to-face time for our middle and high school students. And so I also reached out to you, Superintendent Provost, to ask if there was a way to get more of that face time. And I was actually a little more hopeful that there would be more tweaks to scenario five to get more face time for our older students than what we ended up seeing. And I guess what I would hope for is as we move, as we go back and as we move forward, I would say that we do look at some of those other scenarios and that we also look at, how do we get our middle and high school students more face-to-face time without them being at three to four feet? I, I will actually share something a little bit contrary to what some of my colleagues have said and that is that I do very much, I have also been looking at a lot of data and a lot of science and the data on younger kids and the rates of transmission is to me very compelling or lack thereof, the lack of transmission rates. To, to make me think that if we do need to think creatively, perhaps what we could do is, is look at maybe some four-foot regulations for our pre-K through second or pre-K through third graders with six foot for some of the older students. It's not clear to me in the data where the age range is, where that, that transmission rate begins to shift. And maybe that's something that we could learn more about. I will also share that the information about the, the more scary and, and some, so, some of those more scary symptoms for younger kids are very, very, very rare and they're, they've actually almost ceased now that medical practitioners have been on the lookout for them and catching them much earlier. So, so having the younger students be a little bit closer in my mind could be still a safe way to try and get more of our students having face-to-face time. I'll, I'll echo Member Voss's desires for tents and for us to really think creatively. I would love to see us not just think about, well, how have we done school in the past and what needs to go outside in order for it to be safe, but how could we do school better? How could we do it differently, more creatively, that engages students? One of our community members wrote about having advisory groups or smaller groups of students with a teacher where they're not just doing social emotional check-ins, but where they're also helping students with, with any, any trouble they're having or just questions they have academically. And having those students connecting daily outside under tents to help with, with harsher weather conditions, I think would be something that I would love to see us thinking about. I also echo Member Voss's suggestion that we work with the city to try and put those tents, if there's not space on school grounds, in spaces that are, are close enough by to be safe and viable options for our students. I think that there are schools that, that teach outside year-round, just down the street from us and there are lessons that we could learn. Clearly, there would be some, some professional development that we would need in order for that to be effective. But I think it's something for us to think about and, and in these scenarios, I guess I, I hope that, I know that in these scenarios, we haven't gotten to the how would the education be delivered and, and that that would be the next question. But I hope we can be really creative in that thinking and maybe some of that creative thinking can get us to being able to bring more face-to-face time for all of our students. I also agree with Member Voss that equity does not equal equality. And I don't necessarily think, I, I do think that our, our youngest students will have a lot of trouble doing remote learning. And I do still think that, that having them have more face-to-face time is, is okay as long as our middle schoolers and high schoolers are getting what they need developmentally. I'm gonna get to questions soon, I promise. Going over my notes and again, a lot of this has been asked. I, I, I guess I will say that some of my questions may not be appropriate because I think it's getting ahead of ourselves. I do really have questions about who are gonna be our teachers. And I hear you that you're not ready to answer that question, but it's hard for me to say yes to a scenario where, where it's really hard to know. How are we gonna be preparing the people who are gonna be leading our students to do so? How are we gonna ensure that our students who have, have, have various learning needs are gonna be supported, especially if what was, what was offered last time around when we had this Especially if what was, what was offered last time around when we had this conversation was that co teachers would, would take their own classes. What does that mean for the support of our students? Of all of our students. And so it's hard, again, it's hard for me to understand how these scenarios would work without knowing who those teachers would be. And then I will, I'm gonna put a little plug and this is getting ahead of myself. Again, thinking creatively, we have something on our agenda that is gonna bring us to a conversation in just a moment or. Just a moment, probably in a few hours on, on the potential for restorative justice in our district and this came up from numerous. Folks talking in the public comment period and I would like to share that restorative justice and restorative practices. Are not just about discipline, they're also. They're also about forming community and there are a lot of really great opportunities for our students to engage in restorative practices. To build community remotely and that that is something that I would really love to see us thinking about. For our remote learning plans so that our remote learning is both thinking about the academic, academic needs and the social emotional needs. Restorative practices could be a really, really useful tool to be able to build community amongst our students when they are learning remotely. So I guess I just said a whole lot of stuff without really asking questions, maybe you can get some questions out of what I said. I will end by saying I agree with member Voss that to me, option two is really not viable. And I think option five is only viable if we can increase face to face time for our middle school and high school students without there being at three. Three feet or four feet and I would love to see us reconsider some of those other options. That, that get us back to more face to face time. And again, thinking creatively and not just about how school has been, but how school might be.
Do you wanna respond to?
Sure. I guess the, the one thing we haven't discussed. And this may be a place to get some direction from the committee is whether you, you want me to really explore the time dimension. Because the, the spacing. And the desire to get more face to face contact for students fight against each other. The, the more spacing you provide, the less students you can fit, so the less. The less face to face contact you can have. But we've done all this assuming that we need to keep the day within sort of reasonable parameters to what they are now. In, in another type of scenario where, let's say we're not dealing with a virus, but schools are just faced with overcrowding. In this case, we have overcrowding not caused by extra individuals, but by not being able to put as many individuals in the building at one time. The go to scenario for schools is to go to double sessions. And so I guess I would ask, if you want me to try to maintain space and get everyone in. Do you want me to look at double sessions? I know that, that has to be a question for the whole group, but. I guess I would throw that out there as kind of like the only other space to go to if you say keep the spacing and get all the kids in.
I, for me personally, I would be interested in seeing what those look, what those scenarios look like and I know this is challenging because we're asking you to. To, to expand upon a, a number of scenarios here and that's a lot of work, but I do think it would be useful to see what that looked like. I also think there's, again, how can we be creative? Can we think about a four day? School day for all students, but to have that staggered, can we also think about? I mean, I hear you that there's a lot of heat early on in the summer. Or earlier in the summer than when school typically starts and also if, if students are outside. That might help mitigate some of those conditions and make them a little bit more. More bearable and, and have learning be more effective, so I guess it's just. It's thinking about. How can we just think creatively and differently a little bit about this? So yes, I would be open and, and excited to see something that, that staggered timing or thought creatively about what timing looked like.
Okay, thank you.
I inadvertently lowered member Fallon's hand after I lowered. Member Levy's hand, so member Fallon is actually next in line, so member Fallon.
Thanks, seeing as how we're at almost three hours and still on the first agenda item, I just wanna say. I know that we all want, that we're hearing that parents want to get their kids back to school and get face time and I. And I have definitely heard loud and clear that. Our seventh through twelfth graders want to be in the buildings and. But I think the reality is, is that there is gonna be some remote learning and I wanna make sure that we are providing our teachers with. With the tools to do that well and to feel. That they are prepared to do that. If it becomes necessary to go back to that model. At any point and so I, I would like to really investigate. The going to a half day once a week for professional development purposes, I know that. Growing up that we did that in my district and it worked very well. To know that you had a half day every Wednesday that was used for professional development and whatever else you needed and it was great for planning and for common. Planning periods, so I would, I, I feel like we're asking a lot of everyone right now and that maybe that would be something to consider. Moving forward while we're making all these adjustments and plans. And then I really. Want to encourage, I, every year, I mean, I remember last year in the fall showing up for open house at the high school. And discussing getting window film for one side of the building, the second floor. Or third floor. Side of the building because it was so hot in there even by eight o'clock at night. And promising that it was something we were gonna look into because the teachers and the students were just boiling. The thought of students going back to school, wearing masks and teachers wearing masks during that and kind of the anxiety around it all. I really think that we need to have outdoor spaces available, sun shades. Tents, whatever it takes, because I think that the six foot distance is gonna be impaired. Imperative and I think that we are really underestimating what the combination of trying to teach and speak and learn, wearing masks. At the beginning of the year when students are already anxious and wearing masks and that heat is gonna be like for certain parts of the buildings. So I would love it if you could look into the double sessions and I think everything else has probably already been said, thank you.
Doctor Provost, anything to say on that?
No, other than the, the one thing that seems to be emerging as a consensus is to pitch as many tents as possible for the fall.
Okay, member Gold.
Alright, thanks so much. So first a clarifying question and then something else. Will any scenario that we come up with also provide a remote option for students who choose? Or need to remain at home in September, like is that, is that a definite no matter what that? North Hampton's gonna be providing that up, needs to provide or will be providing that option.
Yes, it's, it's my reading of the opening guidance that that has to be a part of the plan.
Okay, so any, so even like the full plan that they said is still there would be. Kids or who need to medically or, or by parent, you know, choice that they stay at home and North Hampton would provide remote learning then for those kids. Okay. Then I wanted to just bring up and see if, you know, because I know in our discussions, we talked about a potential, I don't know if it was called scenario twelve or what have you, but. Sort of along the lines of. The idea where it's, it, to develop the, in the hybrid model where teachers. Would be working with two cohorts during the day, the first cohort in the morning would be in person. And then the second cohort would be in the afternoon and remotely and what, and what that would look like, it's a big ask of families in, in the community. But it would ensure a rotation where every child gets face time with the teachers and it values the remote learning time. But it also establishes in the schedule an opportunity for time when teachers are teaching remotely because. If I'm a classroom teacher and I have students that are working remotely, I need that time to be during my school day, right? Like we can't. Their teachers are not gonna be able to do that remote work outside of the school day. And so, for example, eight thirty, you know, if I'm a, a fourth grade teacher and I have twenty kids. Eight thirty to twelve, I would have ten kids in front of me, I would be adhering to the six foot guidance, which would be really helpful. And then at twelve o'clock, students would go home for lunch. And that would also enable teachers not only to take their lunch, but also have their prep or I'm not sure what you call it in North Hampton, but with a teacher's planning time. Where they have their half hour or forty minutes. You take your lunch, you take your prep and then you engage in remote learning with the kids that were home. So if I, my other ten kids who are working at home in the morning, that's my time to say to them, you know what, I'm gonna get online with you. Either because you chose to stay at home or because you're part of the kids that are coming in the next day. And I'm basically swapping whether it's every day, every two days, an opportunity to see all of my kids and make the remote time meaningful. The other addition to that, that would provide for is sort of like what member Fallon was saying there is. You could use the second half of the day in the beginning of the year for the professional development. So rather than doing, you know, the remote time in the afternoon, that could be teacher professional development time during their workday, if that makes sense and. So I was wondering if you had any chance to, you know, think more on that or, or what your thoughts are with that scenario.
So the, the only thing that I think we'd have to take a look at is the actual contact time because my understanding is. The combination of. In face to face instruction and remote learning, verified remote learning with attendance taken. Needs to meet the time and learning requirements that are currently on the books with the possible exception of the waiver of some days we might get for professional development. So there is, there is, I think in that, the, the one thing that I just worry about is. If you have students in the morning. And students in the afternoon, they're essentially each getting a half a day. So, so I think that we're gonna not make our contact time requirements in that case.
Well, but I guess just to clarify on that, and I hear what you're saying. The thinking would be that the students and it's something that we've heard from parents and sort of that you shared in your slideshow, that the remote learning needs to be valued, that they have to say you are getting credit for that. If I'm an afternoon group student and say I'm a fourth grade teacher, I might say, listen, I'm gonna see you. From one thirty to three or whatever the window of time would be. You need to make sure you got that work done in the morning, right? So they're, they're gonna be doing work while they're not with, you know, there's, there's meaningful work that has to be done because. There is gonna be face time remotely with the student and the next day I'm gonna see you, right? So I might see you back live in person in the classroom. If that makes sense, you know, so when I send the kid, when you send the kids home with a bagged lunch and for their prep or their break. They're going home, they might actually go home with an assignment, right? Because I mean, if you think of the length of the school day, if you take out lunch and you take the break, then you're really looking at an hour and a half. Or so, maybe two hours. Where you need to make up learning time and those two hours, you can send them home with an assignment if that makes sense, so I think that we can, you know. Figure out ways to make that meaningful and also makes it so that every teacher. Not only is in their own classroom, which is really important in terms of that building and community, right? Because a, a high school teacher could be doing this in the high school, the middle school teachers could be doing this in the middle school. Elementary can because you're just cutting your class in half essentially. And so it builds that community piece for it, it gets the teachers in the room, it gives the time for the professional development. The biggest ask is for parents in the community that are gonna have to deal with the fact that kids are coming home for a half day, but if we're gonna prioritize equity and. Access and all that, I think that in, that might be something really worth looking at in terms of the, the hybrid model we're looking at because. We need to make sure that whatever the remote learning time is, is not empty time. And I feel like the only way to do that is make sure those kids know they're gonna be back in front of the teacher engaging in the work that they did at home. And so I, I'd love to see some, some version of something like that. Tweak and also to figure out when are teachers going to be working remotely in their schedule because that. That becomes a huge headache as well and figuring that out and I think a scenario like this does that if you give teachers part of their schedule where they're working. And other than that, I mean, I guess I would just second the whole piece about making sure second, you know, a lot of what everyone said, making sure secondary. Is, is equally valued and, you know, and I get the whole thing of, you know, maybe elementary needs it more, but I think. I, I feel like we could go around in circles forever and ever saying, you know, come to the same place where you gotta get everybody, all the students face time, you know. As much as humanly possible and I don't think you can value one grade level over the other, honestly, I think that everyone needs it and so we gotta come up with something that. That does that. And yeah, I think that is, that's all that I got there.
Thank you, member Gold, member Busansky.
Thanks, I, you know, had a lot of the, I had a lot of the same questions as other members, so I really. Appreciate, you know, that some of my questions have been answered and I'll just try to. Not be too repetitive, I'm, I'm just curious, just kind of backing up to the description to the fully remote model. I'm, I'm really glad that you developed a robust professional development model, but. And I feel like you laid out the costs for remote learning really well, I'm just curious about the costs of the professional development, paying staff. Et cetera. Can you lay that out for me, Dr. Provost?
So we, that, I would say that that cost, which is about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is the upper. The upper range, that's the cost of bringing everybody in five days early to do professional development. If we did some other model where we did early release days so that. Staff could receive the professional development within the course of the school year, we could reduce that cost, but we just sort of. Put it out there in the sense that we might have to prepare for opening in a remote model, we might need to do the training prior to the opening of the year.
Got it, okay, thanks and in the slides, the term alternative staffing requirement. I, I don't know, can you explain what that means exactly?
So sure, if. I don't have my blueprint in front of me right now, but say, just for an example in. At a, a six foot distancing. In Bridge Street School in first grade, I might need four first grades. Right now there are two first grade teachers, so I have to figure out some way to teach the other two first grades. I don't, I don't have an answer for that at this point in time. When a scenario is picked and when a distance is picked, then I'll know how many classrooms I have to, to staff with, with educators. And then I can figure out what the options are for, for. Staffing those classrooms.
Got it, okay, and just what's, sorry, did I interrupt you?
Is that clear?
Yeah, what, and what's a base room? Sorry, just wanna make sure I understand my terms here.
Base is the after school program at Bridge Street School, it currently is taking. A classroom which would have to be vacated in almost all of these models.
Okay, great, thanks, so I know we've taught, you talked last time and looking at the. Survey that the, that NACE did, I'm just curious about. What, how you're gonna be able to manage, you know, which teachers wanna come back and which teachers wanna teach remotely and how that will kind of. Play out and sort of work out so that we have enough teachers to teach in person, et cetera, and have enough teachers. And or have enough teachers to do the remote teaching that's necessary during a hybrid model.
So again, I think that starts with the selection of a model because then I can determine how many remote teachers versus how many. In person teachers are required, then I would post for the remote teaching positions because everyone at this point is in. An in person mode and we'd, we'd actually be asking some teachers to transfer over and then we would. We would fill the positions like we normally do. In, in the sort of ideal situation where we have exactly as many requests for transfers as we have vacancies. They would just go in, but it's very unlikely that it will be that, either we will have an excess or a deficit. In which case we will, if it's an excess, we will do interviews and, and determine which teachers would be best suited to the remote learning. If there's a deficit, then we would try to recruit some teachers and possibly involuntarily transfer some teachers to remote teaching.
Got it and. So where, where do you feel like your position is on making sure that all teachers who don't wanna come back in person don't have to?
So. I think that, that fits into the equation of, of trying to figure out. Which teachers to sort of prioritize. which teachers to um sort of prioritize for remote learning. But I, I can't say that we have, we're able to guarantee 100% that all the teachers who may not want to come back and teach in person can be slotted for remote jobs. You know, we, for example, we don't even know that we're going to be opening in a remote or a hybrid model. We could be opening all in person, in which case there really would be very few remote jobs. Or we could be opening all remote, in which case everyone would have to be remote whether they wanted to or not. Um, so there are just so many variables, but I think what we can do when we have a hybrid model selected is determine the number of teachers, post the positions, find um people in the, to fill the positions and then see where we stand in terms of either an excess of teachers who don't want to come back or a deficit of teachers who um want to teach in the remote learning and then, then take it from there. Um, also knowing that that is going to be a provisional appointment, right? Because if we staff up, staff up for hybrid and learn that it's fully remote or fully in person, then we'd have to move those people back either into their prior positions or keep every, move more people into the remote positions.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm just wondering, because I don't see in any of the plans, um, any kind of additional learning or additional attention to our high-needs learners. And I'm just curious how that, um, how that, uh, you know, looking out for them fits into these plans.
So in the, in the scenarios for scenario five and scenario two, where we're prioritizing K to six, we're giving every student, actually it's pre-K to six, every student pre-K to six, in-person learning every single day. So I think it's the maximum in terms of intensity and frequency. In scenario five, where we have uh the, the seventh and eighth graders split into A, A group and B group, we have Wednesday is an additional day, so the, that, the high-risk students would be prioritized for the additional day. And then in the high school model, we actually have some leeway. So we're splitting, we're splitting the group into uh four and teaching three sections per day. So everyone is coming in basically four days a week. But we also have enough flexibility within that to bring in some high, high-risk kids every day.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then um in the uh models where there's four feet, um, so you know, the elementary students are back pre-K through five in their own building. So is, how many kids are in a classroom? Does that change at all as to what we had before the pandemic? Or is it uh fewer kids in a classroom? Or how does that look? How, how, how many roughly?
So uh, the difference between six and five does not create that much additional space. At um, six feet, it's more or less 10 to 12 um students per class. At five feet, it's really 12 to, to 14, depending on the size of the class. At four feet, it's about 16 students per class.
Okay. So it's fewer than?
It's essentially what we had prior to the COVID, so three feet is essentially status quo.
Okay, got it. And um, let me just see if I have any more. Um, so I guess, you know, I really lean towards uh scenario five over scenario two. I, you know, my thinking has, I don't know if it's evolved or clarified, but after all the conversations and emails and readings, um, I just feel like it's really important that middle and high school has FaceTime as well as elementary school. So I, I lean towards taking scenario two completely off the table and working on scenario five. Um, you know, kind of drilling down and looking at scenario five, it does seem to me that the research is showing that for elementary school kids um closer is that they're less likely to spread it, uh, you know, for all the weird things that everyone has said before. Um, and that maybe we could go to, down to four feet. Um, but I think we're going to learn a lot in the next month or two. We're learning so much so fast. Um, so I, I don't, I know that doesn't solve anything or make anything easier, but it does make me want to stay closer to the five or six feet mark for all grades. Um, but um, it does seem like the uh middle schoolers and high schoolers in the five feet and six feet um models are getting sort of the short end of the stick. And it seems like if we could figure out another place for the fifth and sixth graders to go, it would really um help free up, or really just the fifth graders and that JFK could continue to be a sixth, seventh and eighth grade building and NHS could continue to be a nine through 12 building. So my question is, can't we come up with an alternative space for that fifth grade, for our fifth grader somehow? Um, I just, you know, we know that we're going back slowly, we're reopening slowly and I just think there has to be some other spaces available so that we could um increase safely at six feet distance, getting seven, uh, seventh and eighth graders more FaceTime and getting the high schoolers more FaceTime. Having all five grades in and out of that high school, um, under that six feet model just seems really um, just really limiting. So um, I know I brought this up before, but you know, I can't imagine the senior center is going to reopen. I don't know if the libraries are going to re, when they will reopen. Um, it just seems like there, uh, isn't there a way to kind of look at that differently so that we can sort of open it up for middle and high school a little more?
So we did do a quick survey of city properties and I don't think that's going to pan out for us. We, I mean, there might be some space, but I don't think enough to, to capture the number of kids we're discussing. What I think our best bet for increasing spaces is the tents, which is why that's what I've been pushing our central services to, to line up for us. Um, and in five of the six schools, we have lots of room to place tents. Um, so I think that's, that's probably our best option there.
Okay, is there a reason that we couldn't put tents in, is it Lamson Park outside of Bridge Street? Who, who owns that park? Who's property?
City property.
City property and there's no reason, but why couldn't we put tents on it if it's city property? Any thoughts on that?
Nobody's asked us yet, but the Parks and Rec Commission controls it and DPW takes care of it. But no, I'm, I don't think we've gotten that far along with um, with the discussion, so.
Okay.
I don't think it's been foreclosed. I just don't think there's been a proposal.
Okay, so it sounds like that might be a possibility. Uh, but you had mentioned earlier, Superintendent, that tents would be used for something like, uh, you know, a band or chorus, which I completely understand or some of those things. But what I'm hearing is it might be more useful to use it as just an additional classroom space so that we could have kids more spaced out and maybe keep the fifth grades at the elementary school, right?
I'm not, I'm not saying that it couldn't. I'm just saying that there are some classes that really can't happen indoors as, as we understand the, the recommendations right now. So in order to keep those classes functional and alive, I would want to try to prioritize them for the outdoor spaces.
Right, right. And, right, well, and we know that band only happens in the middle and high school, so that's not the issue at elementary school level. I wish there was band at the elementary school level, but there isn't. Um, I wish in a post-pandemic world, there was band at the elementary school level, but there won't be. So um, so I, anyway, all right, I think enough said, that's uh really where I'm leaning right now. Thank you very much for all of this.
You're welcome. Member Condon, you're the next uh member with a hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll, I'll be succinct with my comments. Uh, for the social distance number, uh, I'll put my opinion uh along with many others. Um, in terms of the number, I don't, I haven't seen any data that suggests COVID operates differently in Massachusetts. So I think six feet uh should be the number that we use. I don't, as, as tempting as three, four and five feet are and the possibilities they open up, um, I, I just, I don't, I don't think that's safe. Um, going back to the professional development, I know you tied a lot of the professional development to the first scenario. But as Member Gold and I think Member Fallon mentioned, uh, the reality is that as much as the state wants to get every kid in the classroom, they're not going to all be in the classroom. So we're going to have to provide that professional development at one level or another, regardless of which scenario we go with, correct?
Well, we're going to have to provide it because we don't know when we might have to switch to remote learning. Even if we started with all in person, we could, based on the behavior of the virus, oh, one or two weeks later be changing back to all remote. So that's why we were thinking front-loading the professional development might make sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. I, yeah, I just want to make, make it clear that w- w- one way or another, that professional development is happening. Uh, and then I guess my, my last question uh about tents, how many tents are you envisioning per building?
I don't have a tent per building ratio. Um, we're trying to see what we're able to source at this point. And um, then I think we would equally distribute whatever we were able to obtain based on a per pupil ratio.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Member Kaufman.
Thank you, I'm back. So um, just a few things I wanted to um say. Um, first, like everybody else, I think I, I can't um be more appreciative of all the work that Dr. Provost, you and your team has done. Uh, really impressed with the fact that even just a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about PD and enhanced PD. And then all of a sudden, we have um a whole litany of potential courses and instructors. And in the midst of this, you know, summer is here now and a lot of people are looking for downtime, but this is going to be just a crazy summer. So want to thank everybody for their time and efforts that everybody are putting in. Um, I just want to say that, you know, I read, and I had some discussion with uh other people on the school committee, but I read the um DESI report, the DESI reopening plan slightly differently, uh, more so in terms of what Dr. Provost introduced it as. I, I really don't think that, I, I really think the department is looking at all kids returning to school or almost all kids returning to school in the fall, um, full-time, K, pre-K through 12. I think that's clear in their message, but not clear enough. And I would ask Dr. Provost if you could really enforce the commissioner to make a clearer statement about that. But I think it's, I think it's written throughout this in their own sort of way that basically is saying that the focus now is on how are you going to get kids back to school? And if the environment changes, that you need to then rely on two other options, either hybrid or remote. And to me, that's a fundamentally different plan of action than saying, let's decide as a community which is best. Because I'm really not sure we have a choice. This is coming from somebody who two weeks ago was adamant that we stick with just scenario one. I felt completely unsafe and insecure about putting any adults, much less kids, in a situation where they would be um, in an unsafe situation. So needless to say, I was shocked by the DESI report, but that's really kind of neither here nor there. I, I, I do think if you haven't read the report and you read it at least through the lens, are, are they possibly saying that we need to return to school full-time for every kid? I, I think you'll find that, that's what they're doing. And um, as I said last week, I would never support something like that and I would really have a hard time budging from scenario one if I didn't get more medical um, studies, more research, more capturing what other countries have done, et cetera, et cetera. And I think DESI has done a reasonably good job at that. And so I'm opening up my eyes a little bit more to what the studies are saying. Uh, Member Levy uh sent forward a couple of really great studies on, on uh elementary school kids. And it looks like uh, it's unbelievably rare that elementary school kids pass the virus on to adults, much less on to their fellow kids. So I, I do think there's a lot more to learn, but I, I do think that um, Dr. Provost, I, I, I guess this is where it's all going, is that I really think you need to tell us when you need and what you need from us because I just empathize with you and your team. I don't know how in the world you can wait much longer for us to, if we're going to vote on this or we're going to push forward one model over another, I just, I don't want you to constantly go back and replan and revisit this when there's so much work that we need to do between now and September. So have you thought about like, what's the drop dead last deadline for, for you to get what you need from us? And can you, and let us know, because I want to, I want to make sure you have the time you need.
Thank you. Uh, originally, I thought tonight would be the night. Um, that's why we have this meeting. Uh, the reality is that the regular July meeting is only nine days away, so I think we could have, um, I, I don't think it would be devastating to wait till that um evening for a uh i- an answer, but, and also the reality is that we're only asking for the answer on the third scenario that we have to provide, right? The all remote we've already done, and that's one of the ones required by the state. The all-in-person, I haven't done, but I think it's clear if you can't fit all the students with four feet, the only way to, to do the all-in plan required by the state is to go to three feet. Um, so it's really just a question of what's the hybrid model that, that you want me to work out? So that means that I could at least be working on the all-in um model a little bit more between now and the next meeting. And if there's more direction that you want to go, me to go to with the hybrid model, um, that's, that's what would be helpful for me to get tonight. Like if you want me to, to basically stay with five, but try to continue tweaking it so that I get more time for in-person instruction for secondary students. If you want me to consider going to double sessions to see what that would like, look like. If you want me to um try different spacing arrangements for different students based on age, um, buying more tents. All those things are things I can put into the hybrid model and, and could even to a certain extent, put into the um, the all-in model. But um, it's really, really just a question of the hybrid that we have to choose at this point.
Right. So yeah, I think you, I, I think I just wanted to remind you that if we, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong. Don't we need to come up with a plan to submit to the Department of Education that talk, that says how we're going to bring back as many kids to in-school full day as possible?
We actually have to submit a plan that says how we'll bring them all back.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Right. And that's what they're expecting from us. So if that's something we're going to do, and again, I'm not endorsing it by any stretch of the imagination, but if that's something we're going to need to do, I think you heard some, many great ideas tonight about how we can do that in the safest way possible. And that includes maximizing space, potential community spaces, um, as, as Member Busansky brought up. Um, or tents, outdoor space, um, potentially re-looking at indoor space um, that is not being used to its capacity within schools. Double session is another idea. So despite the fact that the department is asking us to come back a full day, I don't think they're looking for the same model that we left off with pre-COVID. So I think you've heard some, a lot, a lot of good ideas and I know you're going to capitalize on that. Um, I would also say that if we are told that we need to return to school full day, that if the environment changes and the governor or the commissioner changes their mind, I, I have a hard time believing they would then go to a hybrid model. I think they would probably say you need to go to fully remote. So we'll find out more as things go, but I, I think the hybrid model is not only the, the third model that we're discussing, but it's also the least likely that we're going to end up going in that direction. I, I, that's the message I'm hearing from DESI. That said, I just want to ask another question that was brought up by um somebody earlier during public session. And I'm wondering if you've heard anything or if you've given any thought to how in the world we're going to make up for the lost learning time that gives experience over those last three months? Um, I know they receive remote learning. I'm hearing pretty clearly that that was mixed at best. Um, has the department given you any sense on how they're going to help communities make up for lost learning time for the students?
Uh, the only, well, I, I have had lots of thoughts about that and so I'll, I'll deal with that first and then I'll address the DESI piece second. Um, the first step is going to be assessing the students to find out where the learning gaps are. There is a plan being put together by the curriculum group. It actually um was reviewed today. Um, I think the, the cost of that plan is also um quite a bit. I, I think that uh we estimate the cost of assessing and um and getting ready to remediate students to be about $62,000. Um, we think that that can be done very quickly. We think it can most likely be accomplished within the first month of school. And then um, we do fortunately have a system set up, at least through the middle school, of um providing remedial instruction to students who are behind um for reasons other than disability. Um, and we also have uh special ed for students who are, are in the group um, who've already been identified as students who are behind because of a disability. The um, the only- The, and then at the high school will be a little bit more of a challenge. One of the, one of the pieces that we've put in place already is the option of taking Integrated Math I as a full year course. We think that there are some students who are maybe have been on, would have been on track to take IMI as a semester course. They're now going to have to take it as a full year course. And our assessment will show us that and help us to identify students for that. And then there are many courses that are just going to have to be adjusted because some of the skills that students would have normally had received as prerequisite skills in prior courses just won't be there. So we'll be adjusting that as well. In terms of what's available from DESI, I have seen some grants to run school on the weekends and run school during vacations to try to provide more contact time and more learning for students who are far behind. But I think that that money is likely to be prioritized for more high needs districts than ours. So I'm not sure how much we'll be able to capitalize on there. If after paying all the bills, it turns out that some of the stimulus money could be used for Saturday school or vacation school or longer school days, maybe we can do that as a way of remediating some of the learning gaps. I just, I can't at this point say I'm comfortably know that we're going to have the funding to do that.
Okay. Well, I greatly appreciate in the midst of everything else you're thinking about this. It's, Dr. Provost, it's as much of a concern to me as anything. And I know you said earlier today that DESI was open to expanding the school year. I don't exactly know what that means, but to maybe provide additional PD. But I would, I would ask again with how DESI, I don't know how DESI is going to support districts to pay for that or whether they're just going to allow it and then expect local municipalities to pay for it themselves. But I would likewise say it's probably more important that we get extra days for teachers to teach kids who are falling behind. Some of the studies you shared with us is pretty clear that learning, losing three months and maybe more time could have monumental impacts on kids. And I said this last time we met, and I'll say it again, that we owe it to our students that they should not be learning less than their peers who went to school before them. And it's not fair to expect our educators to go, you know, to be able to make up for lost instructional time without giving them more time to do the teaching that we need. So I don't know what the solution is there, but we just need to really make sure that kids who are coming to school way behind, that's going to be a huge problem. Getting them back to school, teaching them, whatever, I understand that's the most immediate concern. But I do appreciate your concurrent thinking about assessing them, finding out where they are. But we really need to come up with a better way to ensuring that we're going to make up for their up to three months of learning. We know that many kids didn't participate in remote. And we also know that some kids who did just didn't get nearly as much out of it as they might have if it was in person. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Members.
I think you called on me, although I think.
Yes, Member Sarah, sorry about that.
No worries. Superintendent, you laid out the costs of scenario one pretty clearly. I'm wondering, I didn't hear you talk as much about the costs of scenarios two and five. I'm wondering if maybe you can talk a little bit about that, or maybe it's just very unclear because of the alternate staffing that's required. So that's my first, well, that's my first question, and then I have a second question.
You're exactly right. It's, the main cost will be staff. There were some transportation issues involved, but I think those costs were addressed by a vote taken last meeting. So knowing which, which version of which scenario we're going with will allow me to put a finer point on the cost of those scenarios.
Okay. And then the second is, I just want to clarify from Member Kaufman's question and your answer about next steps. So what I'm understanding is that the vote tonight would not be a vote, if we were to take a vote tonight or on July 9th. It's not a vote about what September actually looks like. It's a vote about what you submit to DESI. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. We have to submit three models. That doesn't, DESI is not asking us to submit one model that we're going to implement. It's three models to be ready to implement. So I, my expect, I could be wrong, but my expectation is they're going to say, okay, implement this, you know, fully remote or hybrid or all in person when we get close to the start of school based on what's happening with the virus.
So you're anticipating that we are setting ourselves up for a menu, as it were, and then the state will mandate which of those menu options we have to implement?
That's, that's my belief. I don't 100% know that. But I know this is, that the mandate to us has been to provide these, to choose the three scenarios and to submit them to the state approximately two weeks before the opening of school.
Okay. That, I mean, I'm glad for that clarity, but I'm surprised, I guess, that the state would not allow the, like, if they're going to mandate that everybody be completely in person and Northampton is not comfortable with that, could we still opt for one of the other options?
I don't know if that's an option or not.
Well, hopefully we'll have more information soon. I want to echo what other members have said about, thanks for your and your team and everybody who had been involved in this planning and everybody and honestly, everybody in the public who has, has offered their thoughts and concerns and voices to this because it has really enriched the conversation. And, and clearly, it's an incredibly complex situation that you're grappling with.
Thank you. And I know that's a little bit of a disappointing answer. I will say it's kind of frustrating for us too as superintendents. I'll tell you, the one refrain we've heard over and over again is you have to be ready to be nimble. You have to be ready to completely reconfigure your district on the, you know, a moment's notice throughout the upcoming school year. So I think they've told us to have the three plans ready. They haven't exactly told us how we're going to deploy them.
Are you all set, Member Seraphie Cox?
Yeah, I guess the, sorry, the last thing that I'll just kind of come to is I would just then really encourage us to be really mindful of what you brought to us at the last meeting where you were saying, these are the criteria that need to be fulfilled in order for us to return to in-person. And so, you know, I know that those criteria aren't on this presentation, but I just want to let members of the public know who are, who may not have been on that meeting that there are some clear criteria that were set out about how to assess whether or not it's safe to return in person. And, and I hear you that that may be out of your hands, but I, it's my understanding that, I don't know, I guess I would just encourage us to stick to clear criteria and data-driven decisions.
Always a good, always a good model to go with.
Member Voss.
Thanks. That's a great segue to what I was going to say. I, I honestly can't imagine sending everybody back in September and being able to afford to in a way that's safe. And for DESI to expect that any of us would just do that, I think is unrealistic. Maybe there's this crazy chance that this virus is going to go away. But if you look at any map of this country and think about the colleges that are welcoming students back in late August and people traveling for other reasons, it just seems so highly unlikely that I would be very supportive, Dr. Provost, of if we do have to come up with a scenario for sending everybody back, putting very little work into it and saying, the only safe way, you know, this is me speaking, but it seems possible is to hire twice as many staff and to have school run in two equal sessions. And it's going to cost us more than we can afford. So if you want to pay for it, we'll do it. And move on to planning for something that's actually more realistic about getting teachers and students reunited. And with that, what I was going to say before I realized that DESI actually wanted that, which I did not realize, that I will reread the report. I didn't take that away, and I don't doubt it. I was shocked by other things in the report as I was reading it. What I would like to see a plan for, I think, is something really safe, like extra conservative for September. And I realize this puts burden on families who want and need their kids to get back to school. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but maybe it's on the order of 25% time face to face for most kids and extra for kids who are at risk, those with IEPs and other at-risk kids. And then if September goes well, bumping it up to 50% in October and being able to be flexible going back and forth with groups of kids. And I think Member Gold made some really good suggestions about how to start thinking about combining remote learning with in-person. But that's my suggestion. Let's go in for a few weeks more conservative, get things going. Let the teachers and kids get to know each other to the extent they can and see where this virus is.
I want to thank you for bringing that up again. That is something that we discussed last week. And I just wanted to point out that that kind of logic is also embedded in these charts. If you look at it, you could say, okay, we'll start at six feet and go to five and go to four, depending on whether we see cases in our schools. Another option you could consider.
So I just want to do a time check. We're at 10 o'clock, and we've completed item A. It doesn't seem like we're prepared to vote tonight. So Superintendent, what, we have another meeting on July 9th. Are you hoping that you'll be able to crystallize the three scenarios that you need to submit to DESI as part of your required reporting by then?
Well, I think it's really just the middle scenario because I think we have agreement on the first scenario. I haven't heard anyone speak against doing the professional development for the remote learning, getting the materials we need for remote learning. So I think that plan we can start to implement and get ready to report to the state. As Member Voss said, the planning for all, the full return is actually not that labor intensive. It's one of the simplest models out there. It just requires us to calculate how much space we need for the students and which level you feel comfortable at. So I can, I can do that at different levels and on July 9th. I think that's the date of the meeting. You could tell me which one you want to go with. So I think it's really, really just the hybrid scenario that needs some finalization. And so I guess I just need to ask, does anyone want to advocate for any of the other scenarios? Or do you want me just to try to make scenario five better with more in-person time for secondary students?
Repeat that, please. Sorry. I didn't exactly catch that.
The question is for, for my continued work on the hybrid scenario, should I try to make adjustments that get more secondary students in the person-to-person instruction, which would be either a development of scenario five? Or do you want to start over with something else? Like, for example, in the state guidance, they kind of really strongly said, don't try to make it too fancy. Just do week on, week off for everyone is your hybrid scenario. If anyone wants me to go back to that, we could do that.
Week on, week off for everyone, John?
Yes.
Member, Member Levy, sorry.
Thanks. So I guess I don't want to overcomplicate things, but I do, before I answer that question, want to point out that for our, everybody in-person, all-of-the-time scenario, I don't know that it's, I just want to make sure that we're still thinking creatively and we're not just saying everybody's back to pre-COVID, but that we're saying, as some of my colleagues have said, and as I said earlier, that we're using tents, we're using creative measures to ensure that people are seeing each other still within safe distances. So I think, I just want to make sure when you say it's really simple, that, that, that those components are still going to be a part of it. Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, that was part of my thinking. So in terms of the discussion we had earlier about double sessions, you know, one of the things that I could foresee is saying, okay, so if we're going to do all in with six feet, then it's going to have to be double sessions. Or if we, you know, go to five feet, it might look a little bit less severe or four. And then three might be the pre-COVID, more or less.
Okay. So, okay. Thanks. Then the, I guess for me, for my part, if it's not too much to ask, I would love to see a build out of scenario five that incorporates more face-to-face time and more creative thinking about how to do that for middle school and high school students into that model. And then, again, if it's not too much to bring back a second model, I think, I imagine you want me to go back to the initial 10 or 11 or 12 that you gave us. And I don't have that right in front of me, but something that does do a bit more rotating or splitting of time, I think, would also be, I would be interested to see what that looks like. And I'll let my colleagues weigh in on, I haven't thought through because I had my hand up, sorry, before you asked that question. So I haven't thought through exactly what I think that could look like. So I'll keep thinking and come back if my colleagues don't say things that I agree with.
Member Voss.
I just want to say I would like to see other brainstorming. I don't want to be stuck within scenario five. Call it what you want. But there's ideas in later scenarios that are all good. And I think combining some of those ideas, and I just really encourage getting input from a large group of people, especially people in different schools. It might look different for elementary and for middle and high school, and that would be okay. So whether it's principals working with teachers in those schools or some other entity. But I would like to see some really well-thought-out alternative to scenario five that incorporates a lot of things we've heard in this conversation that we're bringing public because we've talked to so many community members.
Member Gold.
Yeah, regarding which scenario to look at and what you shared about the week on, week off. Just the thing that I've heard from teachers is there's that big risk of essentially being like a week of school, a week of vacation, a week of school, a week of vacation in kids' minds. And if they're not having some frequent contact with their teacher, we're going to be that week off, that non-week in front of teachers is going to be hard for students to remain engaged and think the learning is relevant. So, I mean, it does work scheduling-wise and simplicity-wise in many ways. But when we come down to look at the day-to-day for teachers and students, I think it's, it's a very challenging one to make the learning relevant when they're home. And yeah, I really, you know, just encourage you to look at the possibility of, you know, a hybrid model, like sort of the, you know, was being shared before, I'll share with you where you have in the morning, kids there, in the afternoon, kids working remote. And then you kind of just gradually release it because you can kind of build on it. Can we get more students in or not, or less students? And you create the structure where teachers have the time and the professional development and the opportunity to build the remote learning in case we have to go back there, right? Like, we have that, that work being done. And we also have the work being done of coming back as well, sort of like a little by little version. So, I mean, I've heard from a variety of schools that, you know, and thinking about teams and thinking from teachers, what that could look like. And it seems like it addresses a lot of the challenges that schools face when you think of lunch and reset, lunch and prep and all that. And I think it's, it simplifies things. So I would, I would encourage something like that if it was something the other members would be interested in hearing. And if the community would be interested in, and Nace and everybody.
Member Kaufman.
Dr. Provost, I'm wondering, like, you hear all this information from us. I know that.
Dr. Provost, I'm wondering, like, you hear all this information from us. I know that, um, I'm just wondering what happens now. Earlier, you had sent out to us a series of working teams that you had. Do you have a group that you work with to try and incorporate this information and get feedback on it and then move it to the next level? Or are you working more individually at this point?
No, we, we work everything as a group. Um, so that, the core group, which is me and the principals um, and directors meets on a daily basis. And then the other members of the peripheral groups meet, uh, one day a week with us, more or less. Um, so we work, we work the models through every, that, that whole constellation of people.
These models, these reopening models go through different working groups that you had? So there's a number of people that are, are getting feedback? And is that to me? Okay. So, I mean, I, 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 somebody said it, I forget now, even though it was two minutes ago, I think it was Member Levy, but I, um, I, I, I think the idea of taking, we, you know, we're not experts here. We will, obviously, we'll make a decision, I guess, but I wouldn't be opposed to you trying to summarize everything we've said. I know some of the people on the working groups are probably in tune with this meeting tonight. And I really would not be opposed to you coming back and saying, I, we think we've heard everything and we think this is the model to go with. I just feel like if we keep leaving the door open, um, it's not gonna get shut. So, um, you've heard from us twice. You've taken our considerations, um, not only from last week, but I think there's a tremendous amount of other good advice that we're giving you now. And personally, if we, if you can wait till July ninth, I would propose that that's the last date, that we need to make a decision if that's what you're waiting for. So you can move ahead. And I would value personally, um, a decision that is, um, presented to us because you've gotten the input from a wide variety of people from your different working groups. That's how I feel. Yeah.
Member Levy.
I second what Member Kaufman just said, and I'll just credit where credit is due. I believe it was Member Voss who initially said that, but thanks for giving me the credit. Um, I, uh, so I, I completely agree. I would love to see you all come back with, here's what we're summarizing based on all of the, the input and what folks are saying. And I'll add two things to that. One is, I do think it's worth considering a model where some of the younger kids are potentially closer together. If that allows, uh, more kids to have face-to-face times at the older, at the older grades. And I also strongly, um, am opposed to week on, week off for all of the members that, uh, Member Gold mentioned. And as we think about needing regularity for working parents and low-income, um, families, every one of these scenarios is going to be hard for working parents and for low-income families and for families that are gonna need to figure out childcare. And if we can find the least horrible one, that would be really great.
That's a great point. You know, we are not, none of these options are ideal by any means. And that, I think, has to be sort of the, the preamble to all of our reopening options.
Okay, so it sounds like we've reached a stopping point for item A on our agenda. Um, so, um, Superintendent, you'll, you'll come back with us to try to hopefully synthesize everything that we've thrown at you tonight and, um, and try to come up with some, uh, a hybrid to the hybrid that, um, that tries to meet that. The next item on the agenda, item B, is a discussion. Uh, there's no vote scheduled. Um, it's entitled student safety and discipline without an SRO. And, um, uh, Member Seraphie Cox is listed as the person, uh, leading this discussion. So I'll turn it over to Member Seraphie Cox.
Thank you. Um, so this agenda item was originally going to be a vote on, uh, uh, the elimination of the memorandum of understanding with the Northampton Police Department um, and the Northampton Public Schools that allowed, um, the School Resource Officer to, um, to operate in the schools. And, uh, since that agenda item was put on the agenda, uh, or was requested by myself to be put on the agenda, um, the, uh, Northampton Police Department has eliminated the position of the School Resource Officer. So, um, that piece itself, uh, was moot. However, um, it, it does offer an opportunity, uh, for a discussion about, uh, for one thing, whether we want to, as a, as a school committee, make a statement similar to what Amherst Pelham, uh, schools, uh, school committee did, uh, around a resolution, um, saying we don't want, you know, regardless of whether or not there becomes money available in future, uh, Northampton Police Department budgets, we, we don't want a school resource, school resource officer, uh, in the Northampton Public Schools. So that's one question. Uh, another, uh, discussion is just kind of about what we would imagine as, uh, as being, um, something that we should put in place, uh, in light of the fact that we won't have a school resource officer. And, uh, I, I am aware that whatever sorts of, uh, discipline that, uh, practices that we would put in place, be they, I've heard a lot of folks talk about restorative justice. That is where I, uh, would put my vote, uh, towards restorative justice practices and, uh, and perhaps the creation of a restorative justice program. Um, but I'm keenly aware that that also takes funds. And so, um, one question that I have um, as, uh, as a member of the school committee and, and looking at the support that the, that the city was giving through the, uh, the, the Student Resource Officer before. I have opinions about what that support was, but, uh, it was, it was funds that, that were allocated for the schools, um, to perhaps request that 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 money come back to the schools to, uh, support, uh, restorative justice program. So there's kind of a lot in what I just said. Um, I would love to hear committee members' thoughts on what, what sort of discipline practices should be in the schools, whether or not you would support a, a, a resolution akin to Amherst Pelham. If so, then, uh, we can bring that to the July ninth, uh, school committee meeting for a vote. Um, and, uh, I haven't gotten a copy of that resolution yet. I, uh, reached out to, um, one of the members of the Amherst Pelham School Committee to, to get a copy of it. Uh, but it essentially said, we, we're not interested, you know, we, we don't want to have a, a school resource officer in our schools in the future. Um, and then, uh, and then how you would feel about, uh, about requesting from the city that we have, uh, um, the funds that were originally allocated for the School Resource Officer, Student Resource, excuse me, the SRO, to be, uh, um, allocated for the schools, to, to, to go towards a whatever sort of program we would want to see. And for me, that would be restorative justice, but I also offer it up, uh, to you to hear your thoughts.
Member Levy, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Member Seraphie Cox for, for putting this on the agenda. And thank you to the community members who have been really vocal and those who spoke in the, in the, um, in the public comments about this, this issue. Um, I want to really strongly voice my support for, uh, um, a resolution. I don't know if that's the right word. Um, for our school committee to, um, strongly oppose, uh, a, a school resource officer in the schools, even if funding does become available. And I will be, um, eager to see the wording of the Amherst Pelham, um, resolution, uh, so that, so that we can really think about, um, how that can work for our community. I also really strongly, um, am in favor of, uh, uh, restorative justice program for pre-K through twelve. Um, as I mentioned earlier, restorative justice is really a piece of restorative practices that, um, accomplishes a number of things, building community, um, teaching students to manage conflict, lowering suspension rates, lowering expulsion rates, empowering students, empowering student leaders, um, bringing more equity. There are really amazing models, uh, one of which is in Holyoke, um, that we can learn from, that, um, that encourage student leaders to be a part of creating the kind of community that they would like to see in their schools, um, and empowering student voice. And, um, just the, all of the data about the, the school-to-prison pipeline, restorative practices is something that very much, um, interrupts that. And so I would also like to strongly support the, um, the request to the city that the SRO funding be allocated towards supporting a restorative practices program for the school district. And I'll throw out there, would also be a really great addition to our city in general.
Um, so before I call on the next person, I guess I should just, um, by way of explanation, so the, um, there was not, uh, so, um, Officer Wallace, um, is a patrol officer um, who had been detailed to the schools. So, um, the, the police department was paying his salary, but was not having him be part of the regular patrol, uh, rotation. Um, and so when the, um, given the budget cuts that occurred and the elimination of five, um, five uniformed officers, um, he's basically been put back onto a normal patrol, just because they've lost, uh, patrol officers. So, um, there was not separate money for a, uh, for a resource officer, per se, that, um, so he's basically just being redeployed, uh, because of the shortage in the patrol officers. So, uh, that's sort of the situation. Obviously, um, if the schools want to develop a, uh, restorative justice program, that's certainly something that can be part of a budgetary discussion. Um, but that's, uh, that's sort of the backstory on the, at least how the School Resource Officer was funded. Um, and so his position was being funded as a patrol officer. He just wasn't, um, being required to be, uh, um, as part of the regular patrol. He had been redeployed, um, in sort of a Monday through Friday position with the schools. Member Voss, you have your hand up next.
If Member Fallon was ahead of me, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm happy to go.
I think her screen froze and then she dropped off, but she's, so, um, um, if you want to yield to Member Fallon, that's fine. Member Fallon.
Thank you, Dr. Voss. Um, yeah, I, so I just, I guess, addressing all the points you raised, um, I'm fine with supporting a resolution, to be honest. I, I'm, it's, it's non-binding. The school committee changes every two years. I, right now, I don't know that I feel like it's strong enough. I'm more concerned with the fact that there's, there's the Massachusetts state law requiring school resource officers. And I know that that's being addressed right now by the state legislature. I spoke with Senator Comerford about it on Thursday. And so I would actually like to wait and see what changes are being, and I know you can get a waiver for that, but I would, I, there are changes that are in the works being made to that law. And I would actually like to maybe become, like, use our advocacy to make sure that, um, our voices are heard in the, in, in the, what's going to change for that law, whether it's rescinded, whether, I, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that. But I just, my only concern is that it's, the resolution in itself is non-binding. I'm happy to support it, but, um, I'm more concerned with the, the law that's on the book, books. I know that Amherst has, did not apply for a waiver. I don't think the law is actually enforced. Um, and it feels sort of meaningless in many ways. Um, but that would be my preference, would be to address the mass general law. Um, and then as far as restorative justice program, um, I would be absolutely supportive of that. Um, but once again, like everything else, I, I would like to be sure that we commit the time and resources and professional development to do it correctly, um, and entirely, and not just have it, um, be something that we, you know, devote a day of professional development to, or we, um, you know, have a few, uh, T-shirts made up for students and, and call it. Like, it needs to be an absolutely, uh, a, a large-scale commitment on the, on the part of the district. Um, and we need to devote the resources to it to make it successful, um, so that it's, um, so that it's not just a gesture, an empty gesture on our part, and we can ensure that it's as successful as possible.
Member Voss.
Thank you. So I want to echo what Members Levy and Seraphie Cox said. Um, in terms of a resolution, I would really fully support that. I appreciate, Member Fallon, your various perspectives on it, um, and your support, but also your other information. Um, I, I'd like at Northampton to make a statement that this is really important and put together a resolution. And I'm excited to get the actual wording and not just the Gazette article reporting on it and see if, um, we might make changes or if it would be very similar. I don't know. But I'd like to talk about that in July as well. Um, I'd like to even take it a step further. We had public comment last month, or earlier this month, um, asking us to consider some school committee policies that explicitly ask for police presence at certain events. And I don't have it all clear in my mind, but I would like us as a committee to look at those policies and maybe recommend that the policy, um, subcommittee take a second look at them and bring them back to us. And in terms, and I, I absolutely support, um, what I think we've talked about over the last couple of years in terms of a upcoming, our, our code of conduct, which is still under development. And, um, I know a lot of progress has been made, but do, having a restorative justice program that's meaningful and funded and, um, not an afterthought through whatever mechanism we can, I'd like to talk about that. And Mayor Nerkowitz, I think, one question I have for you in response to how, um, Officer Wallace was funded and what the recent changes mean, is if there is a ten percent reduction in the Police Department budget, um, and that therefore, um, has essentially eliminated the SRO for now. Um, and just to be clear, I support, um, making that more permanent through these other methods. But that ten percent, would the school committee be allowed to ask for, um, a certain amount of dollars? And I don't know what that amount of dollars would be to support a restorative justice program that would essentially take the place of the prior policy. Can, can we ask for money for that?
And, and that's what I said when in terms of a budgetary request from the school committee, certainly, that's, um, something that's possible. I would just, I would just say that the, um, the funding that was eliminated is essentially, was essentially coming out of our, um, you know, fiscal stability reserve fund. So we're, you know, we, we, we've lowered the amount that we've relied on from that. So, um, all of this is relative as we wait to see what the state budget's going to be, whether chapter seventy, what chapter seventy is going to be funded at, what other eight is going to be funded at. So we'll have a clearer picture, hopefully, by August or September. So we'll probably be revisiting, um, the twenty-one budget, hopefully, not for bad reasons, but we'll have an opportunity to revisit it, uh, once we have a clearer picture of what the, what the, um, what the state budget will look like. But certainly, if there's a program put together, that's certainly something that could be requested, yes. But obviously, it has to compete with all the other, um, if you are at the city council meetings, you'll know that there were lots of people suggesting how those funds would be spent, um, and for lots of things in the community, lots of other, um, purposes within the community. Um, and so, uh, there's going to be a lot of, uh, um, competition for those funds, which I just have to remind people are, are, um, one-time funds that are, um, yeah, so that we're still, are still somewhat tenuous, given the state budget situation. So, yeah. Uh, the next person is Member Condon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, uh, two things. First off, I'm in support of the resolution. But in terms of what could replace the SRO, I would think we would want to gather some input from the student gather some input from the student body and the staff at the buildings themselves instead of making the decision for them about what they would like to see replacing the SRO in in their buildings? That's it.
Oh, Member Fallon.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly address something that Member Voss brought up. In regards to the policies, I, you know, I just want to be clear. I I don't know as chairables and policies how much more I can say this, but, you know, I've gone through. I know exactly which policies are problematic and I've gone through those. And, you know, the one that's most egregious is from 1996 is the last time our committee laid eyes on it. There are two that have been removed. I don't even know when by the MASC, and they shouldn't be in our manuals. There's one that was updated in 2014 to align with best practices, with DSE guidance, with all of these. There's one that we actually did vote to amend, but it's still not updated, the version that we voted on in 2018 online. And so it's now four hours into a meeting, and the last thing on our agenda are our policies, one of which we're voting redoing a first reading because it's actually against the Constitution. And so if we want to go and address all these policies and get through all these policies that are statements of our beliefs as a committee, we need to start making them a bigger priority and put them closer to the front of at the top of the agenda. And so that's the only point. I'm happy to have you guys refer them to us, but we have so much policy work that we're behind on. And I have all the changes for all of those policies. And it wouldn't take long, but we we just keep putting off our policy work. And I think that's a that's a real shame.
Member Gold.
Thank you. And thanks, Member Seraphie Cox, for bringing us to the conversation. So I and I fully am excited and see restorative justice practices coming to Northampton schools. I know that if I'm not mistaken, Superintendent Provost and Seraphis are mentioned already that it actually is a part of the new code of conduct already that emphasizes restorative justice that's going to be developed. Is that correct, Dr. Provost?
That's correct. The joint school council meeting is next, is July 7th to ratify the new code of conduct.
Great. So that's great to see that the that's already in the works and I hope it just continues to grow. Regarding the resolution, I think that it's really important for us as a community to have a conversation about this and really understand sort of how Member Condon was sharing, asking students and teachers and really making it a, really making it a conversation before we come up with a resolution so that it's the right fit for our community. I think that we clearly need to be supportive of the national movement and the efforts going on. At the same time, we need to make the right fit for what for Northampton's community and what we need. For those of you who don't know, because I know there's a lot of people in the public, I've been an urban public school teacher for since 2004, and I've been teaching in Springfield since 2008 where we have 90, over 90% of our students are students of color. And the feeling down there about the SROs in my school coming from the community, from parents who have grown up and lived there and seen the importance role of police officers has been not to detach from the police, but actually to build relationships with them. And they've actually looked for ways to create positive relationships where the police learn to trust the students and the students learn to trust and and get support from the police. And I bring that up just in the sense that for my school in Springfield, that's what they need and that's what they want. And it's built on from the parent community, built on from the teacher community and the surrounding community and the police community, and how can they be supportive? And so I think that prior to us doing a resolution, I think it'd be really helpful, whether in partnership with REAL, it would be a great avenue for us, but to have some public discourse about this. So we really gather all the opinions, gather all the information, gather all the data, you know, maybe whether it's through a student survey or what have you, and teacher survey and community survey, really understand what the community is asking before we put forth a resolution.
Member Kaufman.
Thank you. Trying to get my head straight. I I think I, let me start with the SRO. You know, if we were if we were voting on whether to have an SRO, then I think it would be critical to do the kind of things that Member Gold suggested. I mean, they all make a great deal of sense to me, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable writing or passing a resolution, not only because we just have not heard from Dr. Provost and from guidance. And most importantly, we've heard tonight from two students, but I've also heard from a few students who are on the opposite side, who are just recently graduated and stated that they gained a great amount from their association with the SRO. It did surprise me when I read it, to be honest with you, but I can't discount that. We just don't know enough. But I think my point is I'm concerned about moving in this direction. I understand the importance of it as a community of where we are now, but we're going to take a vote and spend a lot of time discussing something that is a moot point. And I don't, I just do not believe that we as a school committee should prohibit any future school committee members from voting on whether we have an SRO or not. Clearly, in the past, there was a vote and predecessors voted okay, I think. I'm pretty, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe Member Fallon or Member Busansky, if you were on five years ago, did the idea of having an SRO come to the school committee for your approval? Or was this a decision someone else made? You remember this?
I think it was before my time.
Before my time as well. Mayor Nerkowitz, do you recall?
I believe it's, I don't know the date on the on the MOA, but I think it even predates my time as chair, so.
In my experience, actually in Amherst, there was, there was years ago, there was a lengthy, lengthy debate about getting an SRO at the high school. It did not pass, but I know went to the school committee and I'm familiar in other communities. And I guess my point is I'm not just not comfortable at all having one school committee dictate to a future school committee that they can't discuss and consider a situation. So I'd be more than happy to sign a declaration that says a SRO does not come to a school without school committee approval or need school committee approval. But clearly situations change. Clearly, we have an SRO, it sounds like, for a really long time now. And without really understanding the impact of that SRO, clearly, and most particularly from students that had that experience, I I just, I just don't have a strong feeling on this. I just know that the information has not been shared. And I think we need a lot more information, and I'm not thirsty for it. I just think we need to move on and discuss more important items than spend a lot of time on something that we're not really debating. There are no, there are no ideas to bring back the SRO in high school at our high school. If there was, we should spend as much time as necessary. Regarding restorative justice programs, I couldn't be any more supportive of Member Levy's ideas. Years ago, I served on the high school council. I brought up very similar ideas to implement restorative justice practices, programs, change the code of conduct. The principal and vice principal at that time gave it very limited merit and gave me, whether I would say very condescending and insulting response to that. And I was pretty upset about it. Neither is with at the district anymore. That's why I don't mind bringing it up. But I am quite thrilled that we have a set of administrators now who have bought into the idea or have made a commitment, I should say, into the idea of developing restorative justice practices. I am as excited for anything that we've done as a school committee and as a district. I am more excited about the new code of conduct than anything. Really anxious to see it. I know it was built off a model in Syracuse that has as its fundamental purpose or a fundamental approach to be restorative justice. And we were handed a draft sometime back that was probably too drafty for us to make a comment on. But I'm looking forward to a time that we can make more comments. And in fact, if we have some opportunity to improve it, great. But I would say before asking for more money for restorative justice programs from the city, I think what we can do is we can ensure that it's part of the district improvement team's efforts. In our improvement plan, we'll have some decisions we can make in the fall, in the spring, sorry, regarding where we're going to allocate our budget. Those are two opportunities for us to ensure that it becomes an instrumental and integral part of our district moving forward. And I would certainly love to know more about what we're doing outside of the code of conduct because I truly believe that we have some administrators and staff now that are 100% supportive of it and the momentum is moving in that direction. So I'm quite happy about that. And if we get more money for it, great, but I I'd also feel like we might all benefit from hearing an update at some point about the efforts that we're making and in particular where the code of conduct is and when it will be put in place. So those are my responses to Member Seraphie Cox's questions.
Thank you. Member Busansky.
Thanks. At first, I really appreciated the letter from REAL that Jenny Bender read during the public comment. I thought that really shed a lot of light on a subject that I already thought I knew about. So I appreciate that additional, kind of those additional insights and information. And I'm and I'm glad to see that we don't have to make that decision about the SRO, and the SRO has already been removed. I definitely feel positive about that. I'm happy to consider a resolution. I agree that because it's non-binding, it's a little less that maybe that it's a little less important than what Member Fallon was saying about trying to maybe write a letter or in some way figure out what kind of advocacy we could do to support what's happening at the state level. But I'd be certainly willing to consider it. I guess, Member Kaufman, really, I agree with what he was saying about restorative justice programming and the code of conduct. And I think it's important for us to at least understand where we're at with that. I know that Jeff Kay has had some restorative justice program at the school there. I think there's some kind of beginnings that we can build on, and we don't have to think of it as something that we don't do at all. It's about how can we take what we do and build on it more? My understanding is the code of conduct was developed by a large group of key stakeholders. And so it's not that we haven't heard from the community. And I think maybe it's important for newer members to know that. And when there's eventually room on the agenda, I think it'd be really important to get an update on the code of conduct and on what restorative practices we already have in place and what we've already been doing so we can understand how we might want to move forward and and also to get some feedback from that code of conduct team. So I just think it's important to recognize that we're not, that we're already into this to some degree and and understand where we're at with it. So, thanks.
Member Goldman. Member Goldman.
Yep, thank you. Member Seraphie Cox, thank you for in bringing this on to the agenda. Appreciate that. And I turns out really resonate with a lot of the items Member Busansky said regarding the resolution. And also just sort of wondering like if I'd be open to a resolution. And so the question is, at another time, I'd like to be informed about who would write it, where the information would be collected. Would it be just from another district with our name stamped on top? Or would there be sort of how would you verify the points of the resolution? And who would be the people contributing to drafting it? So that's sort of wanting it to be really thoughtful and meaningful to have. If that's the best way to go, or if it's better to put our energies into drafting letters for the state or something like that. I also am curious if there are alternatives to restorative justice. Before last summer, I spoke with a number of people about the restorative justice practices that are happening in this district currently and concerns they have about it, while at the same time really appreciating that they're being introduced. And so if we want to, if we believe that restorative justice practices and programs are aligned with our values and our our work, then and we want to sort of, I think it makes sense to build out or map out a robust program and then figure out, you know, all of the components of that. What is the timeline? Who are the stakeholders? What are their contributions and concerns and questions? What are their needs? Who would be external contributors to it, internal contributors? What would the cost be? And how would that affect our budget, aligning it with the other values that we are funding? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Levy, I think you had your hand up and I may have lowered it by mistake at the end of that last round. So I'll yield to Member Levy first and then come to Member Seraphie Cox.
Thank you. I, Member Busansky said a lot of what I was going to say, and I apologize. I meant when I first spoke to to reference the code of the new draft of the code of conduct and and mention my excitement that that restorative practices seem to be central to that. And I'm also looking forward to seeing that when it's when it's ready to be shared. And just echo the point that I don't know who, I don't know how many community members weighed in on it. I do know there was a very large committee that drafted it or is continuing to work on it. And so I do think that the community has had an opportunity to weigh in, at least to a certain extent. But I do agree that community, community conversation is really important. I just want to emphasize what Member Fallon said, which is that restorative practices is an initiative that's got to be well-trained and well-funded in order for it to to be impactful. And so I want to make sure that, and and I I hear you, Member Kaufman, that that maybe there's a conversation still coming about how we're allocating budget resources. But I don't recall seeing much in the budget conversation, at least that we were having earlier, that mentioned supporting restorative practices. So that's where I'm coming from with a request from the city that, given that it wasn't a part of the budget and given that it's a part of the code of conduct and given that I think there's a real desire from the community and I see the real benefit in it, I want to make sure it's funded so that it can be really implemented well. And I think there are some ways of being able to use restorative justice language and do a few things here and there. But unless it's really a full-fledged program that that teachers are really well-versed in, I'm not sure it's as effective as I'm hoping it to be.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the committee for this discussion. I absolutely support what Member Fallon brought up about making a statement about the the state law. I wonder then if if something like that could be incorporated into the resolution. So it could be a resolution saying that we, you know, we have the intention. It's not about tying the hands because as as Member Kaufman was concerned about and as other members pointed out, it's it's non-binding. So we're not actually tying the hands of future school committees, but we are making a statement about we have considered, you know, we're in this moment and we're making this statement now. But that a statement about that state law could be added to the resolution. And and then after that, it's a matter of organizing our our public statements or, you know, our advocacy to our state legislature on that issue. I think that, I think that the other thing that I'll say is I absolutely support the idea of conversations with with both teachers and and students on this issue. The student union has been involved in some discussions around this. I received communication from Eleanor after the last meeting about the student union's interest in in this issue. So I I think that is ongoing. And I think the I think the commu- committee for kind of the direction that you have have given to this issue and and can bring some things to the next committee meeting. In answer to Member Goldman's question about how would it be drafted, of course, because of open meeting law, we can't draft it as as a group in the same way that you might want to if you were working in a more. in the same way that you might want to if you were working in a more informal committee. So, so that being said, you know, perhaps the committee can, can ask two members of us to, to put something together to bring to the next meeting so that we're not violating open meeting law.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you are already pledging to work on it from the beginning, Member Seraphy Cox. I think that might make you one of them. So if you, there's anyone else who wants to work with Member Seraphy Cox on that, you can certainly contact her. Just make sure it's not a quorum of a subcommittee or quorum of the school committee and shouldn't be a problem. So I'll leave it to folks to reach out to you between now and July 9th. Okay, so moving to the next item, item C on the agenda. We have a scheduled discussion and vote on NHS staffing. And we have Principal Valancourt here to, to discuss that issue. Principal Valancourt?
Here.
Oh, yes.
Here. All right, interrupt, but it might be convenient just to see if there's a motion to suspend the rules at this point rather than in the middle of Principal Valancourt's presentation.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Superintendent. Our rules do stipulate that if we go past 11, it requires a vote of the school committee to suspend our rules. So noting that it's 10:55, I would entertain a motion. Member Voss, are you raising your hand to make a motion or?
I am.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm having internet issues. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules through this agenda item and depend, and then we can suspend them again depending on what time it is. That's my motion.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second on that? Motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend rules to allow for discussion of item C and then revisit at the conclusion of that discussion. I'll, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. And those supporting that should vote yes. Those opposed vote no.
Member Gold?
No.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
No.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
No.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Member Goldman?
Yes.
And Member Voss?
Yes.
Okay, rules are suspended. So we will now turn to Principal Valancourt for the NHS staffing discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, so many teachers spoke out this evening in regards to class sizes at the high school. And it is true that this year, not all students have been able to enroll for, in courses of interest. And this has been something that we experience every year. For example, 41 students didn't get their request for a oral language class. We have about 59 students who didn't get a social studies course request. 30 were unable to enroll in a science class. 97 students were unable to take a preferred art course. And as much as I would love to hire four new teachers and for full-time teachers, this is not a part of our budgeting reality. So I also recognize that the school committee worked hard to secure eight teachers in the English department. And at this time, 100% of Northampton High School students have been able to enroll in at least one English class. And this is with seven current English teachers. We do have four students who were unable to enroll in a creative writing class. However, that is only because the course itself was under-enrolled. And so we just shut down the class. There were only four total students interested in the course. English class sizes right now for next year range between 14 to 22 students, the highest class being 22. And again, this is with 100% of students enrolled with seven teachers. If we hire an eighth teacher to replace Ms. Currygo, we would have sizes ranging from eight to 20. Based on these numbers, I would like to reallocate this position and hire an additional teacher for the math department. Currently, the math department has nine teachers. Many students have chosen to enroll in a year-long mathematics class as this was an option and request from many students and caregivers as, and for an attempt to catch up on learning loss resulting from the pandemic. This has resulted in our inability to fulfill all student requests. We have 65 students who have been unable to take an advanced math class at Northampton High School and will be enrolling in AP Calc BC and AP Statistics at Greenfield Community College. We have also had to restrict students from doubling up in math this year. Typically, about 100 students, potentially more, take two classes each year. For example, semester one, they may take IM1. In semester two, they'll take IM2. Math class, math class sizes currently range from 19 and the highest being 29. So because I truly respect the input of the school committee and I have heard the request from the English department that maintaining the English position is important, I'm asking for your guidance on maintaining the current staffing numbers at eight in the English department or reallocating the position to the math department.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm wondering if, if things have changed since our budget conversation in regard to the math numbers or the need in the math department? Has, has that, has that shifted since our last budget conversation? I don't remember there being a conversation about the math department at that time.
No. So you're asking if the numbers in the math department have changed?
Right. And I guess the deeper question is like, why? I don't remember this being something that was identified during the budget process. So I'm just wondering if you can help me understand why it's a priority now when it perhaps didn't seem to be before. But I don't know, maybe I'm just misunderstanding.
So at that time, we didn't have concrete understanding of, you know, what's being referred to as the COVID slide or the learning loss that has specifically impacted mathematics and students learning math remotely. And this is one of the reasons we have chosen to offer students a year-long mathematics classes. We have about 75, I can look at my numbers in a second, but we have quite a large number of students who have elected and their families have elected to take year-long maths. Year-long math IM1, year-long mathematics for IM2, and year-long mathematics for III. Actually, every student coming into ninth grade is taking IM1 as a year-long class. And this is because they have missed so much significant information in their eighth grade year. So they need to catch up on skills when they transition into high school. So because of that, we are unable to fulfill every single math request. You know, and so we tried to curve that by saying we won't have students double up. And even with not allowing students to double up in math this year, we are still short and unable to run the accelerated math classes. So it is an impact because of this COVID slide and our need to fulfill and make up lost learning.
Member Voss.
Thank you. So, and thank you for all the data you shared and all the people that have reached out to talk to me about, sorry, I thought I was muted, the situation. And I guess I just want to start by saying that it's really sobering to see how large our classes are across the majority of subjects at our high school. And as Principal Valancourt said, I think this is a moment where we really do need to realize that long-term planning, we need more Northampton High School teachers in these core areas in general. That the fact that I've talked to so many high school students and I really didn't understand the extent of this with, with classes 25, 30, 32 is just not what Northampton education is about. And I think especially in the time of COVID, when we might be doing a lot of remote and we need connections to students, it's even harder to have these big classes. I feel like there's two things going on. Well, there's a lot of things going on, but two things that I just want to talk about. One is the future of English Language Arts in Northampton High School and what it really should be staffed at. And the other is next year. And I think maybe if I separate those a little bit, it helps me with my thoughts. So next year, I'll start with next year. Next year is really different, as you've said. Although I think I might say it differently, Ms. Valancourt, but please correct me if I'm wrong. I think most students have been really encouraged to take a year-long of math, not necessarily as much of an option. I mean, maybe there's an option, but is that not true? We're really encouraging them to take a year of math, right?
We are not encouraged, we have encouraged all new students, new ninth-grade students to take year-long math. However, it's not necessarily been encouraged for IM2 or IM3. That has strictly been optional.
Okay, thank you. And, and this makes a lot of sense because a lot of these kids missed half of the, the high school. Kids missed half of a year of math this past year and JFK kids missed a lot of math. So there's real reason behind that. And I think as a committee, we need to acknowledge that and say, are there resources that are needed to make up for some of that learning loss? What I'm not hearing, and I guess I'd like more information on, is the kids that missed half the year of English. And I have actually heard from more parents with concerns about that than, than I have in math. And I'm not saying that it's a bigger concern, one's a bigger issue than the other. I'm just sharing that they're both concerns for me. And I'm worried about large English classes next year that are not full year and making sure students continue to get what they need in terms of writing skills. And so that's where I'm at with this. I absolutely see why we need another math teacher. There's no doubt about it, looking at the numbers for, for that. I do, what I don't understand is if, well, we need another math teacher. We probably need more than one math teacher. So then the longer-term question I have in terms of English is, I'm really, I don't, I don't think seven English teachers is enough in the long term. And some numbers I'll share is that that's the one class that our students have to take every single year. State mandated, you have to have four years of English. And as we all got letters several months ago, within five or six years ago, in Northampton, we required all our students to take five courses taught mostly by English teachers. So four English classes and a writing class. And my understanding is that when the transition was made to remove the requirement for that fifth class or writing class, there was a commitment made to keeping English classes to 18 or less so that students got really a lot of feedback on their writing, which arguably is one of the most important skills they'll take to whatever career they end up in. And so when I look at the spreadsheets and it says the class size is limited to 25, I don't know the process for that going from 18 to 25. And I'm not trying to pit one need against the other. I just, I'm really concerned that these numbers are much bigger than they should be. And my final little bit of research and comparison is, if you look at the DSE website, Amherst last year had 10 full-time English teachers for 920 students. And Northampton had eight and now possibly going down to seven for 870 students. And this is assuming our students only take one English class. This is not in an environment where we can offer extra English classes for them to choose to take in the same way that we seem to be offering extra classes in other subjects. So those are my concerns. I'd love to hear your thoughts on them. But I think moving forward, I really would like us to find money. And I know that's hard right now, but to think creatively about not cutting the English teacher and what can we do to have another math teacher next year?
So I, am I, are you wanting a response to that or is that just coming?
If, if you want, if there's something I said that you feel like I got wrong or that you have comments, feel free to respond.
Yeah, I do think I have a little insight into that. So I'd like to point out first that currently the average, the highest number of students in a class right now is 22. And the lowest is 14. So, you know, 18 would be a lovely number. And unfortunately, it's not where we are. We're, you know, 22 is the highest. But I think it's pretty reasonable when we compare that number to other departments. And in regards to skills and learning loss, I think it's important to point out that the literacy standards and the English standards are spread throughout a number of different departments. So those are the standards that students are able to access throughout their day. For example, in their social studies or history classes, they're doing their research paper and they're utilizing the exact same standards that they may be using in their English classes. So the ability to persuade and to choose an audience and to be able to listen and speak. And all of these, these standards are the same. Also used in their science classes or many of their other elective classes. So those standards are pretty common and typical throughout each, throughout each, you know, a number of different departments. I also want to point out that I do think it's, it is a little heart-wrenching that more students aren't interested in English electives. I think I can definitely do and couldn't do that work with the English department this year. But I do think that there's some work to be done for recruiting and making these classes a little bit more engaging for students and figuring out ways in which we can promote the English classes, specifically the electives. It is not for the lack of effort or the lack of electives in the English class, but students aren't signing up for them. They are signing up for many of, or trying to enroll or register for many of our STEM classes. And as much as we want Northampton to be, you know, a liberal arts school and to, and as much as we all value the arts and, you know, including, which I include the English department in, you know, students don't seem to be flocking to these particular courses right now. We, our enrollment in our science classes and in our, in our mathematics classes just happen to be of more interest right now for students. And so I think that, you know, it ebbs and flows with where students are interested. But right now, it seems to be the STEM field. And again, that doesn't mean I can't work with the English department to create more classes that are just more enticing for the young people in our school.
Can I just, a quick follow-up, just really in terms of, many people have reached out to me about this. There's a clear plan for the learning loss in math and it's to take a full year, to take a full year, essentially have two, two classes. What is the plan for learning loss in English?
So with math, the only time they get mathematics for those standards is in their mathematics class. Like I said, the literacy standards and the reading standards are seen throughout many different subject areas so they can be covered. Every teacher coming back has been asked to think about how, how they're going to assess or do some pre-assessment with their students. And they will use that data and information to plan and see where students are in their learning and be able to pick them up throughout the, the remainder of the semester. The standards for nine, 10 are pretty repetitive. And then the standards for 11 and 12 are pretty repetitive. So they get to repeat many of those standards in, over the course of their English I and English II years.
Thanks.
Member Kaufman.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Principal Valancourt. I had a couple of questions. Well, let me begin by asking the, Well, let me begin by asking the, you know, we certainly, I think you're probably aware, we've certainly, as a school committee, I've received a whole bunch of information over the last week regarding this issue. And it does seem to be a pretty divisive issue within the school, so I'm sure you're aware of that. One of my questions is to whom else, and I understand what you're trying to do. I see it as not a cut of the English department. I see it as a redistribution of your available resources. But maybe that's semantics, maybe that's the way you present it. Other people see it differently and I respect that as well. But I'm just wondering, who else have you shared this with at the school to come up with this idea? Your vice principals, the English department, your school council, your full faculty? Anybody that you can just mention would be helpful for me to know who, who was involved in this, at least your, your proposal?
Sure. So, yeah, and I think you're right. I have not been using the word cut, but I can understand how that it, it may be semantics and people may hear cut. And, you know, I have apologized for those who have interpreted that, it that way. But you're right that it is a redistribution of staffing. The plan has really happened with, so the planning needs to happen once the schedule is built. A lot of that happens in partnership with our school counseling department. The department chair and I have been working pretty, you know, daily over the last week, building the schedule. We typically have our schedule built by April, so we have a lot of these answers. And we, we know what teachers will be teaching by now and what student classes students need and what they're registering for. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that. So at the same, with the same, in the same timelines. But I have shared that with the department chair and we have looked at the numbers to determine what our biggest needs are. And I have also, the guidance department. I have, I've also sent out all of these numbers and all of the, the forms that you have seen and the breakdowns in the class size. I've also shared that with the entire faculty at large and the department chairs who've been able to look at it. Every year I give the, the department chairs a list of the total requests for each class, the max enrollment. And I ask them to determine how many, I give them a suggested number of sections and I ask them to determine which teachers will teach each class and which sections should run. And that is the responsibility of the department chair to figure that out. And so department chairs have definitely been a part of the process. So English doesn't have a department chair right now. We are in flux, but I did share it with the entire department. And again, when other departments see this and when the counseling department takes a look at it, it's really about what our need is. And when we see we have, you know, math classes at thirty and oral language classes at thirty-three, we really have to consider where another teacher would be more useful or helpful or needed.
Okay. And I don't know, I, I know you're relatively new, but now you're, do you have an active school council? And would you describe your work with the school council as active and did you have an opportunity to share this idea? I know you asked us for some feedback tonight. I'm wondering if you also gathered that from the school council and what they said, if you recall, if you did that?
I, you know, the school council and I had our, our final meeting, you know, at the end of earlier, I don't know, at the end of, at the end of May. And so this was not, this, the schedule was not even on our radar then, nor did we have the numbers, nor did we have the enrollment. So, or the request. So I did not share it with the school council. It is something that I could do. I could ask for their feedback. The reason I'm bringing it to the school committee is because I know it was really important to the school committee to be able to maintain the eight staff, the number of eight for the English department, having eight teachers in the English department. And I don't want to make that change, change without your, you know, your guidance or your suggestion. I think it's important.
One thing that I have a question then maybe for Dr. Provost or Chairman Narkowitz is when we decided on this agenda item, we had decided it was the discussion and a vote. Did that change? Did we make a mistake or did that change? Are we voting on something tonight? It doesn't sound like that's what Principal Valancourt is asking for. So, but that's what the agenda says. Do you have any recollection of where we are?
I think we put it as a vote just in case there was some desire to take a vote. And so like if the comm, count, commit, council wanted to make some affirmative statement by way of a vote. So we just didn't want to foreclose that as an option. So I think that's how it was structured.
Is that the way you remember Dr. Provost?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So with that said, since I don't need to take a vote, I can share my opinion on this. First of all, I, I don't think if we were taking a vote, I, I would be, I'd be pretty uncomfortable with that because I, I do think that it's very fair for Principal Valancourt to anytime or any principal to ask us our opinion. I don't, I, I would hope and feel that the opinion is drawn out or the ideas are fleshed out in, within a school in a positive school culture, which to me, I'm a little concerned with. Despite getting a lot of feedback on this, it's very clear that there's a level of distrust that needs to be addressed at the school. I would think that's, that's not a surprise. But I would appreciate in the future trying to get input from the school faculty and the school council before coming to us. That said, I don't think mass ed reform, I think purposely wanted to pull us out of these situations. If we were taking a vote tonight, I would, I would object to that because I just don't think it's legal. I don't think we, we oversee this level of discourse or this level of decision-making. I think that's fully under the authority of the principal. And if Principal Valancourt decides for whatever reason she wants to, to make this decision, I think this is her authority. In fact, I don't even think Dr. Provost has a say in it. I, I might stand corrected, but I'm virtually positive that we have no say in it. What complicates the situation is that when we were, when this was brought to our attention initially, it was part of our budget discussion. And I feel like we made a decision on the budget based on the, based on the understanding that, that there would be eight English teachers. And that's my only hangup. If, if that wasn't the issue, then I would say certainly, Principal Valancourt, here's my ideas. This is what I think. Frankly, I think you've made a smart decision. I think you've looked at the numbers. I appreciate it and I think you're doing what's best for kids. I have no objection at all to what you're proposing, but I do feel like there's this, this secondary thing that we made a decision based on the budget. The fact that you're not coming to us as a budgetary item, but strictly asking us for our feedback, I guess that takes away my challenge as to whether we have a say or not. So unless my colleagues feel adamant that we need to retain this position because that's how we, this is where we were last April when we made a decision around the budget, this no longer feels like a budget item to me. And you're asking for our feedback and I say that it's your authority to make this decision. And I hopefully, you can make some positive inroads with some of the staff at the high school that feel like they're, that this is the wrong decision because it concerns me more than anything that this is going to adversely impact the school culture moving forward. So it's your decision. I'll stand by your decision. I think it's the right decision based on all the information I received. But I would also encourage you to address the downside of making this decision if this is how you decide to pursue it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Levy.
Remember Kaufman just said a lot of what I was going to say. Except for the thinking that this is necessarily the right decision. I'm not sure I know that or understand that. And I agree that you, Principal Valancourt, are much better positioned to be able to make that determination. I second his notion that I really am concerned about the climate and the mistrust and the seemingly, you know, it sounds like every department got to weigh in about sections except the English department. That troubles me and I think I see where folks are coming from in terms of, in terms of their, their feeling upset about this, this potential decision. I also agree with Member Kaufman that this was a decision that, that we did make from a budgetary standpoint of com, of really committing to eight English teachers. And that is something that, that I still feel strongly is, 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 is a part of, of what I would hope would be moving forward. I also will share what Member Vos says, that I'm incredibly dismayed to see these numbers in general. And I am not sure what we should be spending money on at the high school, if not more teachers for these classes to bring the class sizes dramatically down. So I do hope that that's going to be a part of our conversation for the budget moving forward. I guess the other thing that I, I want to bring up and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, is to say, when we make staffing choices about hiring and not, not filling positions, those are long-term decisions. And it sounds like, and I don't, I guess this is more of a question. It sounds like the increase in math numbers is a short-term COVID-related issue. It sounds like the, the numbers were likely too high anyway, and we need a new, another math teacher regardless or more. Just like we need more social studies and more Spanish and so on. And I guess my question is, does it make sense to make a long-term decision for what's potentially a short-term need?
I think if you answered that, where the numbers are always high. And, you know, if you look back at the, the history of the class sizes in, in mathematics, you'll see that those calc, the calculus classes are pushing thirty-two, the AP stats classes, the same thirty-five. The class averages are very, very high. And again, students are doubling up in math. And, you know, we have, we, if it, if it wasn't for our partnership with GCC right now, we would have over a hundred students who have been unable to get requests in mathematics. And for English, it's four. And I don't think that this is a response to just a short-term situation. I think, you know, we used to have a, a computer science teacher who was affiliated with the mathematics department, who no longer is there. Kevin Lucy is now his own entity of, in the technology department. So that was one loss. And we were, were never able to refill that. And I think, Deana, that you're correct in that we just do need more teachers and it always is a long-term, you know, it's, it, it's a long, the fix becomes long-term. And if we hire a math teacher, that's for the long-term. And the question is, how will the English numbers be for, you know, in the future? All of that's a question. And I don't have the answers right now because student interests change all the time. And like I mentioned, ebbs and flows of student interest. And right now it's in mathematics. At other times it's in English. And sometimes it depends on teachers and sometimes it depends on subject. And there's all kinds of variables, but this is just where we are now.
Yeah, I guess the, the thing that's hard to reconcile for me is the statements from students about not being able to see the board and being in overcrowded classrooms for English. And that's where, I guess it's, it's, I, I, it's not that I'm questioning your numbers. I, they, I, I appreciate, as Member Vos said, the, your, your, the, the homework that you did to share those numbers with us to get, give us a much better, clearer sense of, of the, the differences.
You're all welcome. Like you're welcome to come to the high school and see and look at English classes. There have been times where the numbers have been really high, but that has not been the case for a while and some of the AP classes have been high. And a lot of that is because we haven't had teachers trained to teach the AP class. But fortunately this summer I'm able to send two of the teachers in the English department to be trained in AP language and AP literature. So I think that gives an opportunity for us to spread those classes out a little bit more and to get the class sizes down, which was one of my goals. I'd also like to point out that I do agree that there, you know, there was, there is some repair that needs to happen with the English department. When we were last having a conversation about the budget and we were, and I did propose that we cut an English position. I, you know, there was some disappointment and some upset within the English department. And I've been working to repair that relationship, but I, I do not think the, and I will continue to work on that relationship, but I do want to point out, you had said that the English department didn't see these numbers or have an opportunity to weigh in. Sue Krago was able to determine how many sections were needed and which teachers would teach which class without her being in the schedule. So she did do that before she stopped, before she's, she, she parted ways. And the entire, the entire English department was also able to see these numbers and layouts. And they were able to share who would teach what. I had a conversation just this week with Mr. Selfridge regarding, you know, his interest in teaching more AP classes and sharing that, that load with Carl Mead and who would teach what. Teachers can always choose what they're going to want to teach and they do that work with the, with their department chair. So I just want you to know that they did have, they did have a voice in the schedule. And I also want you to know that I, I recognize I have work to do to repair my relationship with the English department. And I do believe that the morale at the high school is actually better than it has been in quite a while. And I've, you know, I would ask you to speak with all departments. I don't think that the voice of a few really represents the, the nature of what's happening with the faculty and staff at the high school.
Yeah, that's fair. I was really referring to the English department. And I do apologize if I misunderstood your previous comments about, about department chairs weighing in.
Thanks.
Before I go to Member Gold, Dr. Provost, do you have your hand up? Did you want to add something to one of the current or previous questions?
Yes, I just wanted to offer some historical context for new members of the committee. I believe that the issue of staffing in the math department is longstanding. FY twenty was one of the many years that I presented multiple budgets. And I initially had proposed an additional math teacher in that budget. Unfortunately, when the budget had to be redone in order to create more money for negotiations, that position came out. But I do think that we've seen a longstanding need for additional math teachers at the high school.
Thank you for that historical perspective. Member Gold, you have the next hand.
I just wanted, because Principal Valancourt was asking for guidance from the school committee. And I'll let you know, I do support your decision-making in this and appreciate what seems like a really thorough process. And then it's been inclusive. And, you know, I know it's, you know, there's no way ever to make everybody happy on things like this. But it seems like you're making what's in the best interest of the students and I appreciate that. And so, yeah, if you're looking for guidance, I would support your authority and your decision-making on this. So thank you.
Member Bisansky.
Thanks. I do appreciate all the information you provided with us with Principal Valancourt. I'm just, but I'm curious, if Sue Krago hadn't left the English department, what would you have done?
If Sue Krago did not leave the English department, then the position would have stayed as is.
And so you would have continued to have eight English teachers for next year?
I would have continued to have eight English teachers and the class sizes would have ranged between eight and twenty. And I would be doing, you know, I would still be contracting with GCC out for mathematics classes. And I would be turning students away from these, from their, the classes that they have registered for.
Okay. And so, and the GCC classes, that's not filling the need for the AP calculus or AP stats or other higher level math classes? Isn't that what the, or is that what the GC classes, GCC classes are for?
No, we typically have dual enrollment classes, but what we, we typically allow students to participate in dual enrollment classes. But we offer the AP, we offer AP calculus BC in our school and we also offer AP statistics in our school. But those teachers are going to be teaching other mathematics classes and so we have to contract out to get those classes to be able to be taught. Students will have an opportunity to take the AP test and they will also be able to earn college credit in the classes. This isn't typically available to students because we have teachers in-house teaching it.
Got it. And I mean, I agree with my other colleagues that, you know, looking at those numbers of, you know, the class sizes and even my, you know, own experience of my children, it's definitely, you know, something that we have to work on moving forward. But, but I also, I do feel disturbed that we had a really full and robust budgetary discussion about the English teacher. And we worked really hard and stayed up really late to figure out how to keep. Budgetary discussion about the English teacher and we worked really hard and stayed up really late to figure out how to keep. Eight English teachers and now to have this change because um Ms. Krago uh you know, is leaving the high school. So um it it leaves me just kind of concerned um about the budget process and the school committee role. And it just kind of leaves a bad taste in my mouth that we're sitting here having this conversation again at eleven thirty at night. I I think we. Uh you know, went through all, even at that time, we were already, you know, in this school shutdown and the pandemic. And I just feel like we recognize the importance of having. Um you know, English is a real kind of core competency. Um so uh. I realize we're not taking a vote on it, but I do feel um but yeah, I really feel concerned and I think this is kind of we're facing a. Unique one-year situation and once we cut this English department teacher, we're probably never gonna see this English department. Uh grow in size again and that's concerning to me.
I wanted to point out that at the time when we were asked to make cuts in the budget. I had chosen to cut an English position because I knew the class sizes with eight were going to be. Um incredibly small and I also had insight at that time, which um which. I know that many of you didn't agree with, but I knew that um Mr. Isler was not going to be um teaching English in the academy. I knew that um I knew that we would not be having the capstone. Be a part of the English department anymore and so I knew going in that we would have a number of sections in the English department. That were going to be um were going to be freed up, so teachers would have more ability to teach more classes. And so I, you know, I tried to explain that at that time, that this that the numbers were going to be very low because. We wouldn't need the English teachers to cover these particular positions any longer and um. That's why I had suggested that we cut that position. So it wasn't, it wasn't a personal decision by any means. It was really, when we look at the budget, it was really about. Figuring out where um. You know, what my what my needs were and I knew that that would be a position that I could afford. To cut if necessary and I am so very, you know, as sad as I am to see Sue Krago leave uh Northampton High School. I'm happy she has an administrative position somewhere else and I'm also so happy that. Um we didn't have to cut anybody from the English department because the last thing I wanna do is cut staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Um uh member Voss and um I guess. Member Voss, the member Kaufman, and then I think I just I wanna understand what the committee wants to do with in regard to this item, whether. Um it's I'm beginning to believe that the committee is not gonna take an affirmative vote. They're just giving the feedback that the principal asked for. Um but I'm just trying to be mindful of the time um cause we do have other items on the agenda. So member Voss.
Member Busansky really expressed where I'm at with this too. I I wanna recognize, I realize there's a lot in need at the high school. I also continue to be really concerned just about how this decision was made and the effect, the long term effect of the decision. And to I guess leave a few thoughts which include, I I worry when we talk about, you know, um. The at these different sizes of classes because. Somewhere along the way, we're making this decision right now that says. We used to have smaller English classes and now this spreadsheet says it's limited to twenty five when decisions were made before. Where the classes were more like eighteen and just if you do the math, if we look at averages, which is probably not the right way to look at it, but. They average, if they if each student takes one English class, they average fifteen kids per class. With seven English teachers, we're gonna average at least twenty one kids per class and with eight, we would average eighteen. And that's assuming there's just one English class per student, so I guess I wanna leave us. In a place to come back to when we talk about the budget to really come back to this question. Um I think our community needs better numbers in terms of our English instruction and um. I guess I would ask you if you would think about. Well, well, two things. One, if we only have seven teachers, how are we ever gonna ever offer? Classes that are electives that are gonna get students excited to take more English because there's not gonna be space for any of those. That's one thing I just will leave you with. I don't need an answer, but I really hope we think about it and. The other is if you have a commitment to reinstate this English teacher as soon as possible. And um I'll also put a little feeler out there, which. I've long thought part of the reason uh um we have so high enrollments in math. Is we don't expect enough of some of our, we don't give our students a chance in middle school to. Um excel in the same way a lot of other districts do, so the fact that students can't. Skip integrated math one in high school means they have to take a whole nother math class and that's costly in terms of the amount of teacher time that's required. And so this is obviously a bigger conversation, but I think these things should all be part of it. Moving forward so that our students have an Amherst-like English experience.
Thank you, member Voss, and I really look forward to the school committee supporting any budget choices that come about in regards to. Increasing my staffing numbers specifically in English and world language and social studies and science.
So I don't see any other hands, so I'm assuming that we're we've um fully discussed this and given. Uh Principal Valencourt our thoughts and we appreciate her coming to us, given the very specific nature of um. Of what she's proposing and we appreciate your coming back to us about that and um. So I think we would now um be prepared to move on um. Not to item D, item D actually has been withdrawn, so we've already made progress there, so we're actually looking to get to item E. Um but I will need a um a motion to um extend the meeting again. Um based on the prior uh motion. Is there a motion to extend the meeting? Okay, wow. Chair would, I I I don't usually make motions, how about for the purposes of discussion? Okay, member member Goldman has made a motion for the purposes of discussion. Let's see if she can muster a second. Is there a second? Hmm, okay, well.
Second.
Second from member Fallon, so again, like um you know, I will tell you that the. You know, school committee has charged the um the agenda setting team to make these meetings end. Uh shorter and we get lots of items that get added to us often in the. Last twenty-four hours, we get items that are critical that must be added and we add them. Um but we seem to find ourselves um always up against time constraints, so um we. To the extent that we can't take them up tonight, we have to kick them to a future meeting, so they're just gonna pile up and pile up, so. I'm not sure, it's more of a comment, um I don't know how we uh rein ourselves in on some of these items and not take as long, but. That's it is what it is, but here we are at eleven forty-two, so there's been a motion made and seconded. To um extend uh to waive our rules and extend the time past eleven again. Um any further discussion? Okay, I'll ask the clerk.
Now I have my hand up.
Oh, go ahead, member Voss.
Um I would entertain the a discussion or a friendly amendment, whatever, however I wanna do it of. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow that um scheduled for quite a long time. I'm not sure if I know why. Um and I would make a motion that we continue that.
I don't think we can if, can we?
Yeah, the the challenge is that that's a posted meeting that we only we there's only one item on that agenda, so I don't think we can. I don't think we can just transform these items to another to another agenda. That hasn't been properly posted.
I'm the least expert on the policy and anyone who knows it better can weigh in, but I think if we don't finish our meeting. It says we have to finish it in a certain amount of time and I guess I was pointing to tomorrow since. We could end that meeting and take it up since we already have an agenda, but I don't know how that works.
Um, yeah, I just, I don't know that we can continue these items. I just don't know that we can continue these items to tomorrow night when tomorrow night is already been posted and there's. The public would not expect these items to show up on that agenda. Um so we would really need to repost. That we really need to go to the ninth. So we really can't continue these items to tomorrow night. Member Fallon, you have your hand up.
You know, I could get through my items fairly quickly if we didn't waste time talking in circles.
Well, we could, yeah, we could take the, it seems like the resolutions could be taken as a group, frankly. I mean, you could explain them all and they could be voted on as a group. Um so um but we have to, first we have to get through the rules. Uh member Busansky, did you have a question?
I I was gonna say a similar thing. It seems like the next couple items we could get through pretty fast and I'd really like to. At, you know, at least at the risk of really alienating member Fallon, at least get through ma- letter H. I don't wanna push rules and policy off, I swear, but. I I don't know, that's.
Member Gold.
Um yeah, I'd like to ask if we can, in I guess part of the discussion, can we have a a separate meeting to continue these on the seventh or eighth next week? Um because I think looking at the readings of the um just what I'm looking down the list, like we wanna talk about them. We want or not, there's things to discuss and to really read through and make sure what we're voting on and. I just don't see that we can do that tonight and, you know, for what it's worth, I just wanna throw it out there, like it's eleven forty-five and we spoke the most. I gotta just, you know, like we gotta, that's part of one of our things in our agenda is like. Being cognizant of how much we are talking and I'm doing it right now and breaking it, but like, but we add up all the time, the school committee is the one who's talking the most there. And if we add up all that time, but we subtract an hour and a half, we'd at least be at ten fifty. So I really hope we hold ourselves accountable for our airtime and I would and not to keep us all here, so I would motion to do a meeting on the seventh or eighth or something like that.
Um, so we have a meeting on the ninth already scheduled, so um. I guess, I guess, could we extend and then see how far we get and then we can push other items to that other meeting if we have to?
Well, so we can't have an additional meeting, we can't do another special meeting on the seventh or eighth in addition to the ninth and to get this done?
Uh we can, um we certainly can, uh but I guess I.
Yeah, whatever we need to do.
Could I make a motion to extend till midnight and then wait it ends?
Uh, okay. Would the um.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, so member Goldman is accepting that friendly amendment that we uh turn into a pumpkin at midnight. Um so I'll I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on that, so so we can get the vote in before midnight and um try it out.
Mayor Narquitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
And member Gold?
No.
Hey, member Fallon, uh you have the floor. Um Mr. Winnie has has um. Uh rescinded his request to rescind his retirement, so we're not, we're not doing item D, so. You have the floor to discuss these three MASC resolutions.
Okay, so well, the first uh resolution is the COVID nineteen state funding resolution. Um the day after the commissioner came out with his initial guidance requiring districts to have. Uh a certain level of uh personal protective equipment uh for schools. Um Nerissa Wong from Triton Regional School District and Peter Demling from Amherst School Committee. Um got together with a few other colleagues and crafted this resolution. As of this afternoon, it's been passed by a hundred and five. Other school committees already, um and it's been instrumental, I think, in already putting some pressure on the commissioner for offering some sort of relief. Um in his opening guidance to districts, um we're hoping to get um full um reimbursement. Um and so I'm not gonna read the entire um. Resolution for you, but it's essentially stating that there can be no unfunded mandates for COVID nineteen. Um and so I would move to um support this resolution.
Second.
Okay, um any discussion on this uh resolution? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes, yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narquitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Um the second resolution is um a school committee anti-racism resolution. It was introduced by um initially by school committee member Denise Hirsch from Springfield. Um she's also serving currently as the vice president of MASC. Um and just to so that you know, all three of these resolutions um came before me last week. I serve on the resolutions committee for the MASC and all three were approved. Um I will tell you, this resolution met the most um resistance from committee members. And I fought pretty hard to have it uh brought, pushed forward in this form. There was a significant effort to water it down. But um it went through uh essentially largely untouched with just a few typos fixed up. Um so I would move to have this uh to support this resolution um as it's presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh member Levy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I do, thanks. Um so I hear you that 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 it could have been more watered down. I would actually, I don't know if we're allowed to like. Amend it if it's a resolution that comes from MASC. I would actually like to make it a little bit stronger and I would offer up. Um one more whereas, um which is um something along the lines of. Whereas all students at every grade should be taught developmentally appropriate curricula. Um. That that centers identity, equity and inclusion, something about. Um about, cause it it very nicely touches a lot of aspects, but it doesn't actually talk about the student experience and what they're learning. And I think that's a really essential piece that's missing.
Um so in the interest of time, why don't you, why don't we, you work on that and bring it to us for the July ninth meeting? The wording that you would like to see in it, I'm, you can absolutely change it. Um like I said, this was problematic. I know Agawam only passed it in a very watered down version. Um I think uh Newton made some changes to it in a different direction and so we can absolutely make changes to this. But I think that right now is not the time to try and like wordsmith it too much, so I'm happy. To to move this to the next month's, to the July ninth agenda.
Well, I just put my words in the chat and I don't, I don't need to have a long conversation about it unless people want to. Um.
How does that look? Do you see that? Um.
Did that centers includes?
Sorry, that centers.
Okay.
Okay. So does that work?
Uh and did you have a particular place you wanted that?
No, I do not. Anywhere in there.
And you'll accept that as a friendly amendment, so we don't have to vote on the amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, are you okay with that? Member Levy, okay, great, just mindful of a roll call vote. Um, okay. Uh member Gold?
Yeah, do we not have something like this already in our documents at all? I mean, it seems like it's something I've seen. I feel like another, whether it's school improvement plans or district improvement plans or something like, do we not have something along these lines already?
So this one was more for advocacy.
So this one was more for advocacy, show our support as the MASC organization, like this, this particular one, the MASC. Resolutions are going to be put forth before the delegate assembly. So we were trying to already show. Show support that's already kind of this upswelling of support um already. Uh be in, in advance of that meeting in addition to that, but we are working on. Adopting the policy that was referred to us last month. This, the, sorry, it is so late, I can't even think straight. Um, we have the anti racism and equity policies that we had referred to us at the last school committee meeting. Was referred to the rules and policies subcommittee that we're working on over this summer.
Okay.
So I think that's what you're thinking of.
And member Gold, I'll just share that I've asked to be on our next agenda, a conversation about what's happening currently in the district. In terms of anti racism to get a better sense of what's happening and, and whether there's necessary steps for us to take as a school committee to make some kind of resolution, like. Along those lines.
Okay, any further questions or friendly amendments related to the anti racism resolution? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
And member Buscanski?
Yes.
Uh, this next uh resolution was brought to us by um. Uh, I was approached by Noah Cassis from the Northampton uh Mayor's Youth Commission. If you all recall, last year, the um. Charter review committee met um to offer recommendations. And one of the recommendations that they were offering was that sixteen and seventeen year olds be allowed to vote. Moving forward um in Northampton, obviously that would require uh the approval of the legislature. Due to the pandemic, um those recommendations aren't even before the legislature currently. But I know that um Mr. Cassis was hoping to gather sort of a coalition of support. In the meantime, so that at that time, when it does go before the legislature, he could say that uh he has the support of his community. Um, and so the city council has already passed a resolution, uh he's gotten the support of the Northampton. Democratic City Committee and he's asking us to support this resolution to lower the voting age for Northampton. Municipal um elections to sixteen years old and I won't read the resolution. But I will move that we support the resolution. Sorry.
So it's, um, motion's been made by member Fallon and seconded by member Goldman. Is there any discussion on this? This has received a lot of uh conversation in our community and has had. Votes of other bodies as uh member Fallon has pointed out. Um, okay, all right then, so um I'll ask the clerk to call. Oh, sorry about that, member Kaufman, sorry.
No problem. Uh, just a quick question to member Fallon. So what happens after this? This, what, what function does this serve in the big picture and what is the big picture? How does this actually? Get passed?
So there are two things that are going on. Um, one is our individual city charter and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong. So the city charter is a mass general law in and of itself. It's a, it's a statute and so that. Would go before the legislature and theoretically they could approve. Our, our um charter and these changes um that are substantive enough to require them to uh, to approve both the senate and the house, these changes. But conversely, there's also a pretty big push at the state level to just allow. For local decision making um in this, in this process as far as um letting. Municipalities decide whether or not sixteen or seventeen year olds have the vote and so um I don't know which will happen first. I don't, but the, if the pros, both processes are pretty long and obviously everybody's a little distracted right now.
And so is there a chance that Northampton can gain approval and not other municipalities unless they apply? Like, could, could the secretary, secretary of state approve it in one?
Oh.
Town and city and not the rest of the state?
It was my understanding. I thought Arlington had.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them that have, that have requested it and the legislature has yet to grant one yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I think what drove this is that I thought that they approached, didn't they approach the MASC? And the MISC said it only supported if some school committee somewhere sponsored a resolution, so that's why they wanted our school committee to sponsor a resolution.
Yeah, so if it had local support, so now we did, we did vote on and, and it did pass. To, uh, a statewide resolution. Not, not saying that we support Northampton's application, but saying that we support in general six, the sixteen year olds, that. The local, that local municipality should have, should be able to make that decision on their own.
Okay, so this, this could really drive a statewide process forward and um I just wanted to thank you for bringing these three resolutions to us tonight. It's too bad we need to rush through them. They're actually a lot to be proud of here, but. Well, I don't know how this vote's going to go, but assuming it goes in a positive way, I want to thank you for bringing that.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll because it's eleven fifty nine.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Buscanski? And member Fallon?
Yes.
Okay, so that's three resolutions uh all adopted um in seven minutes and it's twelve midnight. Um, so our motion to extend has expired. So uh, I guess the question before the committee is we have item H and then we have item I. Um, and so the question and becomes, and item I, of course, is the infamous agenda format, which we've been trying to talk about for many, 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 many months, but we. Can't seem to get to, um, so those could be put off, it could be taken up tonight or put off to a future meetings, but it will require. A motion to suspend rules further in order to do that. Is there a motion to suspend rules? Member Levy, is that a motion? Oh.
No, it's a request that we put that item first on our agenda for our next.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So start with those items, items H and I as the first items on our, well, after the ratification vote. Oh, none. I mean, I'm talking about July ninth, so, okay, yeah, we can, we can do that. Okay, so it sounds like there's not going to be a motion to extend the meeting. So I guess we will. I don't know if I should just call it as an adjournment because we, our rules forced us to adjourn. Um, or if we have to take an affirmative vote to adjourn. Parliamentarian, what say ye? All right.
To be safe, let's take the vote.
I, I think that's a good, I think just, yeah, um, belts and suspenders, as they say in legal, let's take a vote just to be safe. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I would, I was going to make an emotion to adjourn and do what.
Okay.
Member Fallon's asked of the agenda.
Okay, fine. Member, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll add these items up front at the next meeting on July ninth. Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Buscanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
And member Seraphy Cox?
Yeah.
Okay, I believe that uh is a majority, so the meeting of the Northampton School Committee for June twenty ninth. Is duly adjourned at twelve oh three on June thirtieth.